Good evening, welcome to Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, January 17th. It is 6:34 PM. I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Okay, we are going to re-adjourn, or we are re-adjourning from a closed session.
We're actually gonna reconvene.
Yes, we are, yeah, we're reconvening, not re-adjourning. We are reconvening from closed session, thank you. Were there any, City Attorney, any reportable actions?
Thank you, Mayor. There were no reportable actions and the two items on the agenda were discussed.
Okay, thank you. If you'd please rise, take off any hats, if you have them on, and join us in the invocation by Catalina McIsaac.
Tonight, I'm going to share a definition of wisdom. Accumulated philosophical or scientific learning, that is knowledge. Ability to discern inner qualities and relationships, that is insight. Good sense, that is judgment. A wise attitude, belief, or course of action. And last, the teachings of the ancient wise men. And that word was first used in the 15th century. So I offer my hope that each of us will listen carefully to each other with respect, and listen quietly for that inner truth that asks us to act from our highest sense of right.
Thank you very much. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. City Managers' Report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, there's a lot of people here, I believe they're here for possibly two separate And I may rearrange the agenda slightly with the consent of the council. So with a show of hands, could I see how many people are here for the Building and Life Safety Division discussion? If you just raise your hands? Okay, and the motorsports park discussion? Okay, it's about equal. Okay, so that's okay. So what I'm gonna do with the okay of the council, I'd like to move item number nine to item number seven. It'll be, we'll keep the building and safety at item number five, but we'll build, we'll bring the motorsports park forward just before new business. And I'll need three council members to agree for this. I'll agree.
And I'll support it.
Okay. Okay, we don't have a...
So you want to bring nine before...
We'll bring nine, it'll be just after...
Burton Ranch Development and...
It'll be just after six, before item number seven, new business, which would be the Burton Ranch, yes.
And number eight, which is the transit, which are both primarily staff-related.
Right.
Yeah, I can go with that.
Okay, so just for your information, item number nine will move forward to become item number seven. Okay, we'll start with item number four, which is appointments. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, didn't skip the consent calendar, did we? Okay, the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items that are generally considered routine and will be heard with one motion, and unless the council member chooses to pull an item. Does any council member choose to pull an item? Councilmember Osborne?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Yes, okay. Okay, so if I can have a public comment on the consent calendar. Seeing no one, oops.
Good evening, Council. Mayor John Lynn, Lompoc resident. I asked the council, one of the council members, to explain the $40,000 entry to the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. I asked that question to the Utility Commission the other day if there was going to be a charge with regard to the landfill gas system, and the staff was unable to answer that because it had been a closed-session item for the council. It appears that there is some charge, I don't know if it's a fee or a penalty, but I would certainly appreciate someone answering that for the public. Forty grand is a lot of money for the folks that pay their trash bills to have to cover. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna... What? Okay, so we're gonna close public comment on the consent calendar and bring it to the council for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent calendar.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote.
I...
Nope, okay, wait.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Can somebody answer that question, I guess, that was asked? The $40,000 expenditure? Is that something that can be... It's on the expense report?
So what's the discussion? Can't?
So, is it specifically about which, about the, which portion of the payment? Sorry.
I think I found it here. Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District insurance liability claims paid $40,000?
Right. So, what we incurred, there was, there was an 18-month window which was given to us in order to accomplish from, from the time of direction of the, the need to do the, the gas, you know, the gas remediation of the landfill. We were given 18 months to complete the process, which in my experience wouldn't, if we had all systems going, every other agency cooperating with us, I don't know how that would've been pulled off within 18 months, given everything has to go through. But nonetheless, we had 18 months, or faced, faced some penalties, and there were, we can go back and, and give a chronology of all the times, but there, that included about nine months of that 18 months where we were waiting for the approval from the APCD itself to give us the go-ahead to proceed with the project, with the construction of the project. We were not allowed to proceed with certain components of the project until they had been approved by APCD, the same agency that was giving us the 18-month limit. And so ultimately, we faced some fees and penalties as a result of that, and I really believe it was well beyond our capability, or anybody's capability, to be, been able to avoid those. The good news was that the amount that the project total, ultimately cost us, including with those fees and penalties, was quite a bit, six, several six figures below what had originally been allocated and set aside. So there was not this bigger hit to the enterprise than had originally been anticipated. So actually, the project is being delivered quite a bit below what had been reserved within the budgeting for that enterprise.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Let's vote. Okay, suggesting we keep it, I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, it's 5-0, thank you.
Sorry, I distracted you.
Yeah, you're right, okay. So let me look at this, what item is that?
Well, it was originally item seven. And I really, I hadn't, what I'm raising for the purpose of the audience is, I, I had not anticipated that item seven was going to take that long, and we had, we had people preparing for that, and it sounds like if the other items are gonna go quite a bit, if we have a lot of people here that wanna weigh in on that, I was just going to ask whether you wanted to reconsider your reordering of business for...
Okay, so the issue is, we have individuals that are here specifically from the project that's addressed in item number seven. It's anticipated that item number seven will be a very quick item.
Oh, now I'm, now I'm being told that after your last action, that, that the person that was here representing the company decided to go get some dinner, so...
Okay.
Sorry.
That solves that. Only in real life. Okay, so we did the consent calendar. So we have now staff presentations, we have a monthly update on the financial management system.
Sorry. I'm very pleased to present to you an update on our Tyler software system. Just an overview of what we're doing on our system right now, is we're doing Phase One, which is the financials. And in Phase One, we have the general ledger, our cash management, project grant accounting, budgeting, purchasing, and you can see there's quite a flow up there of everything that's going on with the first phase. So what, what happens with each phase of the program? We have to develop a project plan and a schedule, and that's been completed, we have a schedule out for the whole next year of when things are gonna take place. The resource requirements, which is, our servers have been installed, education and communication, so it's our duty to let our employees know what's going on. We have risk, which is, includes a lot of analysis and testing, and change management, just to keep our employees aware of what we're doing. So what we've done in December and January to date, I, in information systems, they've got the five servers, they were set up in December, the installation was successful, the Tyler came out and worked with our IS system, and then not only do we have the installations, we have our Tyler dashboard, which is the way that we get into our new financial system. Now currently, the things that have been set up in the Tyler dashboard, basically have been trading modules. So in our Phase One, the first thing we're doing is analysis. So they, they've come and talked to us about inventory, general ledger, project ledger, and budget analysis. What they do is they come in here and they either do it by remote trading, or they actually come in person, and they talk about, okay, how do you handle your inventory now? And they show us what Tyler can do, and then we have to make decisions of what we'd like to see happen with our system, you know, if we can make it paperless, if we can make it more timely by having a workflow where people approve it through the system instead of it by paper. These are all the things that we've looked at. So, and what we're gonna be doing next, well actually, today we went over fixed assets and got to learn how we can keep track of things that meet our threshold for a fixed asset, or even track things that we just wanna keep on hand but not actually go through our general ledger. And this week, we're gonna also be talking about accounts receivable, cash management, and the conversion process. This is all in analysis. We're also gonna be later on in the month, talk about purchasing, bid, contract, and accounts payable. The exciting thing is, after we go through this analysis, which actually we've secured a classroom over at the Dewey Center that we can focus on, so that everyone can have a, a place to go to, to learn this training without being interrupted, or interrupting other staff meetings by taking resources. So we meet over at the Dewey Center, and they go through all this analysis of where we wanna go and what we wanna do, and when we get done with that, they're gonna go into, well let me go back here for a second, they're gonna go into a SET training, which is a static environment testing. And so they're gonna take all the information that we've given them, how we'd like to set up the workflow, the approval process, and make sure that that's what we really wanna do. And they'll give us a couple of months to decide, yes, what we said is what we wanna do, or they'll give us options, okay, this is what you said you wanted to do, but is it really? Or do you want to try another approach? So they're very good at knowing their product and seeing how it could be the most useful for our city, and understanding our, our processes. So that's really where we are today. Again, the other modules, HR is gonna start in, in August and go through July, so July, hopefully July 1st, we can get payroll online and have employee self-service. And again, the Phase Three is utility billing and cash receipts. Phase Four will be our work orders, so we could talk to our fleet and our electric company that puts work orders together to get projects done. And then community development, which is the planning and, and business licenses. So that's where we are today. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
If I could just comment?
Sure.
Just wanted to say, it's nice to see you so happy.
I am. It's a lot of work, but it's, you know, to be able to provide information to council on a timely basis, to other staff members where they actually are gonna enjoy using our system, even going through the training, like our project management, we had one employee that works with this stuff and said, no, no, we don't use manage, we don't use your current system, we don't think it's gonna be helpful. And then we showed him what it could do and how timely it was, and they said, yeah, we could use this. And I'm like, yes! It's okay.
It's good to hear that you're happy about a computer system. For those of you guys who don't know, it's a new computer system, the city's coming, updating the old one from, what, 30 years old?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Thirty-plus.
We're coming in, I heard the green screen died?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, actually, but you're smiling, so that means everything's working good, so that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just a quick comment. Respectfully request that when, if you have, if you're having a private discussion out there, take it outside the chamber, we can hear it up here, and it's distracting as we're trying to listen to speakers, so even though you may think you're whispering, the acoustics in this room are very good, so just take private discussions outside if you, if you would. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go on to oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything under the purview of the City Council. If your item is on the agenda, please hold it for that agenda item.
Mayor, City Council members. Lynn Whitmore. You know the topic. October 18th, the City Council directed the city to basically leave me the hell alone after haranguing me over something was done 38 years ago. Well, now it's 39 years ago. I still have the hot tub, I still have the fence. You directed the city to, when they get your act together on property lines, then we'll address the rest of this. Well, they haven't done that, but they're certainly busy sending out letters, at least they didn't scotch-staple one in my front door this time. Amongst the complaints is my fence that can't be higher than a six-foot. Within five minutes of my house are three city properties that have fences over six-foot. The, their main yard on Laurel, that's seven foot, or six-foot-three, with a 13-inch barbed wire on top. The recycled drop-off is six-foot with a 15-inch barbed wire on top, and your storage yard on V Street is eight-foot with a 12 inches of Constantine wire. Now you think that looks better than a decorative top to a fence? Come on, you guys gotta give me a break here. Your job is to work with the citizens, not abuse us. The city said, well, you know, you could move this to the other side of your yard. It's just, it's not equitable, and I believe that is your job. The, this has cost a lot of money. I don't know how many thousands of dollars you have spent on this issue, and you've got nothing for it. You do this to many citizens with not a good return on your dollar. You can't support the parks, you can't repair the tennis courts, there's talk of getting rid of one of the parks in my neighborhood, 'cause you can't support that. Please, City Council, find a way to grandfather me in. Our president today pardoned 209 felons. Maybe this little code enforcement, not a law enforcement, a code enforcement issue can be put to rest. I look forward to hearing from you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Council. My name is Kathy Smersler, I'm the owner and director of marketableu.org. We haven't been to see you in a while, so we thought, since we are making some changes to our classes and what we're going to be offering, we thought we should come and let you know what's going on. What's happening is that we are expanding our facility to include actual hands-on projects, which we haven't done in the past. In the past, most of what we've done is computer work, with the exception of photography. Now we are going to be doing crystal growing, glass edging, windowsill gardens, cards, robots, raspberry pies, adrenal boards, Dremels for etching and woodworking, acrylics, jewelry, copper and aluminum, little bits, which are electronic little bits that you put together and make things move and wiggle and shake. We are gonna continue with our photography, and we're also gonna do our runt rovers. This is my assistant, Norma, and she's gonna tell you some more about some of the other things that we're doing, but we're here specifically tonight to invite you to our open house on February 11th from 2:00 to 5:00. Norma's got your invitations that have been made by us, and I see, oh, we'll be opening on, opening the doors to clients on February 13th. Norma?
And we also have a heat press, two 3D printers, assorted craft projects, bath bombs, butterflies, telescopes, microscopes. Once a month, we're gonna have a family movie night, and we're also gonna have, once a month, a family game night. We're gonna have shaving cream painting, copper wire designs, paracord projects, and we have a foiling machine as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to come here and speak to you this afternoon. I'm here to introduce myself to the Lompoc community. My name is Jeffrey C. Hall, and I ran for the Ellen Hancock Community College Board of Trustees, District Four, which cover the Lompoc Valley, and I was elected as your representative. So here I am. When I ran, there was a proposal before the board to build student housing on campus. Well, that proposal now is a dead, is a dead issue, it's a non-issue right now. So I guess I've had an impact already. And also, I'm here to invite the community leaders to, to attend our spring gathering on the Ellen Hancock campus in Santa Maria on March 1st, and it's for all you community leaders that have an impact here in the community, want some changes, you know, done here in, in the community, we invite all of you all to attend. If you have any concerns or anything you want to present to Ellen Hancock Community College, you can get ahold of me, and I'll, I'll have some cards to pass out at, at the intermission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, and congratulations. Now, the, the open house, sir? The open, the open house on the 1st, what time?
Pardon me?
The open house on March 1st, what time?
Uh, 7, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, actually, it's right here on the Lompoc campus.
Lompoc campus, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, March 1st.
Yeah, March 1st, from 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay, thank you, sir, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. My name is Joey Garcia. I spoke here about a month ago in opposition to the ordinance that the city proposed for marijuana regulation. I'm coming here today to speak because since then, we have formed a group on Facebook called the Lompoc Valley Cannabis Coalition for Safe Access. And our group is as small at the time, it's about 63 members. And we recently had a meeting yesterday with a few members to try to lay out a vision and a foundation for what we would like to see in Lompoc, and it is our hopes that through this group, that we can communicate with the City Council on the newly-formed ad hoc committee that Ms. Osborne and Mr. Vega will be on. Some of the concerns from people that we spoke with is regarding the transparency and information regarding this ad hoc committee and where it's at. And some of the people here in Lompoc who are for marijuana, want it done safely, we want it done to where access is given for patients who rely upon it, and for those who recently helped to enact Proposition 64. And I understand that committees take time, and that there's outreach, and it's done, and so forth. We simply just would like to ask that the council speak a little bit more openly about what's going on with this ad hoc committee, on how anyone who's in the community may be able to join the committee, or be considered to join the committee, and just what the steps are, and that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would suggest, I'd suggest you contact one of the council members, maybe you can get more information about times and where it's gonna be held. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Oral communication. Seeing no one, seeing no one rise, we're gonna close our communication, and we're gonna go to item number four, which is appointments. Let's see, item four. Okay, first is an appointment to the Economic Development Committee, and this is an appointment by Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to promote the Associate Member Felix Hernandez to my appointee at the full committee.
Okay, and I will second that. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Okay, next is... Next is an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is also Councilmember Osborne.
I'd like to appoint Dave Baker.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next is an appointment to the Utility Commission, and that is Councilmember Osborne.
And I'd like to appoint Janet Blevins.
Okay, Janet Blevins, okay, I will second that. Any discussion? Let's vote. Let's vote. And that passes five-zero. Okay, congratulations to those appointees. Okay. Are there any appointees here that would like to come forward and say a few words if you're in the audience? Okay. We're going to move on to item number five, which is a council workshop presentation from staff on the following subjects. Okay, the first is Building and Life Safety Division, and the next is Multifamily Dwelling Occupancy. Now, just so everyone knows, I know there's been some discussion, well, I've been heard there's been some discussion on some of our blogs that we are going to be passing some law or making some ordinance tonight. This is strictly discussion, is brought forward as an informational item. That's all it is. We are not going to be making any changes tonight. Strictly brought forward for information for both the council and the public. Chief Flatop.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for that clarification, because there has been a bit of confusion. We're going to call this the why and the how. That's pretty much the way I interpreted the request. So, let's start a little bit with how we got here. About a year and a half ago, the Fire Department re-inserted into the Building Department for four years during the race, during the Great Recession, the Planning Department was staffed almost exclusively with contract help, with the exception of one city employee. During that time, during that four years, four building officials, six-plus inspectors, and it, and, and under the supervision of an extremely busy Public Works Director. As we started to pull out of the recession, a proposal was made that we transition the building services back under fire and that we start to rebuild staffing so we can build some continuity. There've been some toe stubs along the way. The first building official we hired didn't quite work out. In between the vacancies, we have used contract services. We went out for a new contract. We do not have the same contractor that we had prior to a year and a half ago. And over the last few months, we finally have started to see some stability. When, when we took over the program, I immediately brought it under our organization structure within the Fire Department. We immediately embraced the same level of customer service that we deliver every single, every day in the emergency setting. We immediately placed one of our well-qualified executive officers over the division. The division includes Building and Safety Services and our Community Risk Reduction Program, which is prevention. The supervisor of that program is a certified fire officer. She's a certified plan check professional. She has extensive experience in the construction industry and a whole list of credentials, which is why I've asked her, I had asked her to oversee. The current building official who's been with us for a few months now met and exceeded the job description qualifications, which included certifications and licensure. He also is a, was a previous general contractor. The building inspection is still being done with a, with a contract service, but we finally have hit a level with that as well. The inspector we've got right now has been with us for several months. We're happy with, with what we see, and he enjoys working with the city. So, as we've evolved over the last year and a half, it's been, it's very obvious to us and some of you in the audience that we've definitely come out of the Great Recession. Coming out of the Great Recession has increased the workload. So, the how and the why. So, let me give you a little, little background. The codes, particularly the Building and the Fire Codes unfortunately are built on tragedies. They're built on disasters. They're built on folks losing their lives. That's how the Building and Fire Codes originated. And people ask me why I have a passion, why we have a passion for the fire service, why we have a passion for customer service, why we have a passion for the codes, and why we have a passion for protecting lives. This was a very high-profile incident. Thirty-six people lost their lives in this incident. It's very well-known. This, the next few statements are right out of a national publication. The loss of life inside this ten-thousand-square-foot building was definitely attributable to, yeah, lack of sprinklers, I got all that, lack of alarms. Bottom line, the system let these people down. The conditions allegedly existed because of a disregard for regulations. Robert K. Lewis of the Washington Post, who wrote this article, was published January sixth. This is, this is an extremely profound statement, and we live by this every single day. Architects, engineers, contractors, property owners, government officials have a legal and ethical obligation to make sure that buildings are safe and compliant with applicable We take our responsibility very seriously. Our responsibility is a state mandate, and I'm not going to read all these sections to you. You can look them up if you want, the PowerPoints out there. It'll be on the website in a couple of days. California Code of Regulations has several sections within it that cover everything we do. Now, the mayor opened up with, we're not here to adopt new codes. No, we don't have to. The state's already done it for us. January first, two thousand sixteen, new state codes went into place. We are what's called a minimum-code state. So, by law, at a minimum, we must comply with the codes that are adopted by the state of California, of which there are many. The city has traditionally had minimal amendments to those codes. And once, once I get back on track, I will be presenting the state code for a formal presentation. We have to clean up our amendments, because what the state did, when they adopted the new codes this year, they changed some of the sequencing, which threw the sequencing of our amendments off. We, in our adoption of the state code, that is the minimum code, we can, we can be no less restrictive than the state, pure and simple. It applies to all building occupancy types, from your single-family dwelling to your mid-rise, high-rise buildings. It recovers all the requirements for everything that's up there. Soup to nuts, pure and simple. This is a sampling. This is not every single code. This is a sampling of the California codes that are mandated by the state of California that we are charged with enforcing. Permits. Pure and simple. Owner authorizations who intend to construct, enlarge, repair, demolish, change, et cetera, needs a permit. I'm going to show you some exceptions in a minute. This is right out of the California Building Code and the California Residential Code. We don't make it up. State code requirements related to plan submittals. It's right up there. The plans, which are generally referred to as construction documents, need to show all necessary information so we can assure that the project and the plans are complying with all the codes that I just showed you. We talk a lot about design professionals. Do we need a design professional? Do we need an architect? Do we need an engineer on every single project? Not necessarily. We'll talk about that in a minute. But the state is mandated, and the California Professions in Business Code has also mandated that for certain occupancies due to risk, structure, et cetera, that these plans do, are to be designed by a design professional, who has a certificate, licensure issued by the state of California and its current. I had a discussion the other day, why won't my pre-engineered building that was engineered back east, that's got a New York engineer stamp on it, be, why can't you take that? Because the state of California won't let us. So, I talked about exemptions. I've got about four slides on exemptions. I'm not going to read them to you. They are available, and I'll tell you where they're available in a minute. So, these are some exemptions from permits. Now, I want to call your attention to that very first one there. Hundred-and-twenty square foot, we're all familiar with, you know, your typical tough shed, et cetera, not a commercial. And they're exempt unless you've got utilities into it. Fences not over six feet, sidewalks, driveways, oil derricks are exempt. If you have any oil men in the room. Retaining walls that are not over four feet, water tanks, painting, papering, tillering, carpeting, cabinets, similar finish work. Temporary motion picture and stage sets and scenery, however, we do have some requirements for motion picture filming within the city, and it has everything to do with generators and lighting and pyrotechnics. Above-ground swimming pools, the green cloth over your greenhouse, swings, playgrounds, window awnings, non-fixed movable structures, decks not exceeding two-hundred square feet. So, there are exemptions to the permit process. Now, work may be exempted from plans, depending on the level, depending on the complexity. And it's, it's as simple as if you believe your work is exempt from a plan, make an appointment and come in and share with us why you're, why you believe you're exempt from all the state codes that were mandated to follow. Permits. We believe it's a simple process. I'm sorry, some people do not. Applicant comes in, fills out an application, plans are needed, then plans are reviewed for acceptance. If acceptance, then plans are taken for review. Understand that depending on the level of complexity of the project, we are the gatekeeper. We, the Building and Safety Services Section, are the gatekeeper, our permit technician, which I'm sorry, Vita, I left you out of the list. We have a fully-qualified certified permit technician now at that counter every single day, unless she's on vacation, which we don't allow. So, we are the gatekeeper, and depending on the level of complexity, many, many departments in the city may have to touch those plans. And we've given you the menu. We do set up a timeline. One of the things that the team sometimes pushes back on me is the extreme timeline that I've put on them for turnaround of, of plans. This process, because of the codes, because of the state mandates, is very similar from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. I must tell you that the plan review times in building, and now that we've got our well-qualified building official onboard, we are now doing almost all of our plans, with the exception of complex plans and with the exception of, of weeks when we're extremely busy in-house. We are not the final say. Regulations, codes, the state is really good at it. The Department of Consumers Affairs, Contractors License Board, very, very clear direction, and a bulletin that was issued to licensed contractors back in two thousand and ten. Building permits are required. This is just a continuation of the code sections. Very simple, very straightforward. The licensed contractors in the room, I'm sure, get the bulletins all the time from these folks. Owner builders, we do have an accommodation for owner builders. The code accommodates owner builders. Sorry, I know I drifted away. It's basically the same. The declarations are a little different. And as I said, there are some projects that don't take a plan, and some projects do not need a design professional's wet stamp on them. You know, I, I take a very simplistic approach. Some of you have had the opportunity of sitting with me and talking about codes and, and talking about your projects. I take a very basic, simplistic approach. I ask lots of questions. I ask lots of whys. And I take everything that's said in public comment to heart and follow up on it whenever I can. So, let's talk about plumbing. So, there was a Senate bill that was passed around two thousand and fourteen that basically changed our lives relative to plumbing. And it was codified in Civil Code Section one-one-oh-one-point-four. Pretty clear. And the purpose for this, I'm sure the plumbers in the room, I actually talked to one earlier today, has everything to do with upgrading of fixtures per the new codes. And there are deadlines. I asked this question. So, it is after January first, two thousand and seventeen. On or before January first, two thousand and seventeen, all non-compliant, now, understand, this is single-family dwellings. All non-compliant plumbing fixtures shall be replaced with water-conserving plumbing fixtures, regardless whether the property undergoes alterations or improvements. We are not driving up and down the street asking our citizens, by the way, are you in compliance with Civil Code Section one-one-oh-one-point-four? However, when you submit a plan for a project, you're going to be asked if the facility, if the, if the residence is in fact in compliance. Multifamily residential, we'll talk about those later. And real property and commercial, they got a little more time, but they still have to retrofit, regardless of whether the property undergoes alterations or improvements. Exemptions. As I, this was an interesting discussion earlier today. Sometimes I get into the strangest discussions in the barber shop. All, all legal and all appropriate. The exemption is cleaning of stoppages, including removal, installation, blah, blah, blah. That's exempt. Now, if the trap drain becomes defective, becomes necessary to remove, replace the same, now we fall under a permit. But somebody asked me today, well, do I have to get a permit to snake out my drain? And the answer is no. Water heaters. Chapter five of the California Plumbing Code is devoted to water heaters. I know this is exciting and riveting stuff. Five-oh-two-point-oh is permits. Five-oh-two-point-one is general, okay? It shall be unlawful, you can read it right there, to install, remove, or replace without first obtaining a permit. The rationale for the permit has everything to do with seismic bracing, venting, installing of the vents. I was talking with somebody the other day, when I used to be the fire chief building official twenty-seven years ago in another community on the Central Coast, it was interesting to me, at that time, we actually had a code amendment that the water heaters had to be in a separate closet outside, could not be in the garage. We don't have that here anymore. However, there are certain water heaters that, by the way, the reason for that requirement is because we were seeing a rash of garage fires where folks would spill gasoline in their garage, the vapors would get up to a certain point and they would flash. So, overkill, I guess you could say, we made them, put them in a cabinet outside instead of just saying, well, let's just lift it up, which the code was changed to if it's up above a certain level. There are water heaters, gas-fired water heaters, that you can have at, at grade. But all this has to be verified per that section of the plumbing code. Windows and doors, another one of my favorite topics. I didn't, I mean, that's a pretty fancy name for a window, I got to tell you. Section, now, the energy code, the green code and the energy code have been quite challenging, and I'll, I'll acknowledge that across the board. I know it's been challenging from our, from our contractors, it's been challenging for the building team. This thing has been changing faster than we can keep up with it. And different than the code, than the three-year code cycle that we're used to with the Building and the Fire Code, this thing's been evolving since two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. So, in essence, right after we embraced the new California code the last time, they were, they were full speed ahead changing these codes. And this is, these are some of the results, or I guess you could call the fallout of those changes. Pure and simple, this is what has to be done, thus the need for the permit. It's mandatory by the state of California. Are we driving up and down the road looking for people changing out their windows? No, we are not. However, if we're in the area, we're always going to check for a permit. Somebody asked me the other day, what about a glass? No, this doesn't apply to glass. It applies to the, to the whole ensemble. So, delays, breakdowns. First of all, we have a very dynamic and well-talented team in place. We're busy. It's obvious to me that the construction business is busy. One of the reasons it's obvious is because I've seen prices on some of our projects go up pretty high. Design team, and these, these are your architects, these are your engineers, these are the folks that support the construction industry, does not always coordinate with the client and the building staff. I'll give you an example. I had a call from an architect today, said, I know you met with the owner and the contractor on site. I don't know what you want. I gave the, the owner... I gave the owner and the contractor onsite an actual document of what was needed. So we do see a communication breakdown, and then that steamrolls in with us. Almost everything you get from us is in writing or in an email. Lack of attention to guidelines and instructions for responses to the corrections and submitting incomplete plans, either at the first revision or subsequent revisions. We have folks that are very good, they get plans in, they get through on the first time. We have folks that it takes a while, and we try to work with those people. When a design professional puts their stamp on a set of plans, in essence, they are attesting to the fact that they know the codes, that the plans they are submitting is in compliance with the codes, and that you're, that's the service you're paying for. And then, I don't care if it's building, or fire, or what have you, this is the way we've always done it. And I'm sorry for that. The codes change, the laws change, the mandates change, and I get it. 20 years ago, it was, for me, being a fire chief 20 years ago was a lot different than it is now. I'd love to say, well, I liked the way I did it 20 years ago because I didn't have to worry about OSHA, I didn't have to worry about all these regulations, I got to go out in the field a heck of a lot more often. So the way we've always done it, I sympathize with everybody who is feeling a little stress because of the changes and because of the fact that we're paying attention to details. So, I was doing some stuff on change the other day, and I came across this. Boy, howdy. If you want to make enemies try to change something, we've had more discussions and more hurt feelings over some of the changes we've had to implement than I believe is truly necessary. The building team, I'm extremely proud of the entire team. The entire team is building and fire. I believe we embrace customer service, I believe we do a good job, I believe in many instances, we do a great job. We have talented people who will bend over backwards, who will work late into the evening, who will work on weekends just trying to get projects through. They work collectively to help each of the applicants that come to the counter. I personally, when necessary, will come in and sit with the building team and sit with the clients and work through the project and figure out how we can move around. There is some leeway we have with alternative means and methods in the code. We talk a lot about black and white, you saw it up there earlier, maybe? Yeah. It is, it's not always black and white. We believe in reading the code and looking at the intent and trying to follow the intent. We do sometimes have to refer to interpretations. When, when we have to go to the black and white of the code, it's simply because there's no other way to get it done. At the end of the day, we're a regulatory agency, and therefore, we have a mandate to assure compliance with the codes. We have a moral obligation, we've taken an oath, and we're passionate about what we do. And sometimes, that does get in the way of some projects. So let's talk about the future, because I'm pretty excited. This team has been working hard, I mean, hard, for a year and a half. We have just finished, Vida, please hand that out to council, and we'll make it available on the back, on the back table. We've just finished updating some, not all yet, some of our building permit and plan-related handouts. They got done after I finished this slide, so that's why it says they're undergoing. But we're not done. The updates that Vida has passed out to the council and has made available on the back table have already been posted to the city's website. But we are not done. The next task, I met with our building official today, and the next task is to review every single document that's on that website and build a brochure. And build a brochure so that if you go to the website, it's all there. But not everybody uses the website. I mean, if you're, if you're in the field, it's pretty hard to get to the website and pull some of this stuff up. But build a brochure that'll be available at the counter, that you open up the brochure and it's got a table of contents in there. So depending on if you're doing a residential, depending on doing, if you're commercial, whatever you're doing, inclusive of examples, it will be in that brochure. And then photovoltaic is a whole nother monster. We were mandated by the state to come up with a streamlined photovoltaic process that is on our website because the state mandated that it be on the website. Now, I mentioned to you that we don't have to ask you to approve codes tonight because the state has done it for us. I will be presenting those to council. I've had kind of a heavy agenda lately. I apologize, I'm a bit tardy, by about 30 days. However, the state codes are in place and our amendments are still in place. But once I present that to council, a workshop, we are planning a workshop with builders, design professionals, and others, and I look forward to everybody that's here tonight being there. And here's something, I think. This is a great, great concept, Dina. What we are proposing is every May that it's Building and Safety Month. Now, this is consistent with the International Code Conference, which are the promulgators of the basic code for the state, of their national campaign. And every single May, we will have looked at every document we use to do business with our clients, and where necessary, update them and share with them. Every single May, whatever the state has done to us the 12 months before, we can talk about it and commiserate together. I believe, and I've heard from others, that we are doing a good job. I know there are challenges, there are challenges to everything we do in life. But please understand, we have a mandate. And we don't, we know that there is absolutely no way that every contractor, every homeowner in our community has the ability to stay up with every single code that's passed by the state. And that's our job.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions from the council? Councilor Mosby?
If I were going to replace a toilet, do I need a site plan?
Just a toilet.
No. No site plan?
I think you need to come forward to the microphone.
Rafael Canejo.
I put that exception up there for no site plan. Go ahead.
Well, just reading your document here real fast, I just got it handed out to, so just, it said, "Plan requirements: Each application for a building unit shall include a completed permit application form and plans." And specifically, so I was just wondering if you needed a site plan to change a toilet? Because it said, the way it reads here, it kind of looks like it does, but...
That's just a general statement in general, but for just the replacement of a toilet, no, you don't need a site plan, and we don't require a site plan, and we have not required a site plan, that I'm aware of.
Okay. P-traps, I mean, did it say, I guess if it's not a change out, a different location, if you change out your P-trap in the same location, you don't need a permit for that?
You do.
You do, to change your P-trap?
Right. And it is in the plumbing code. It's very clear, very plain, very simple. It does say you do need a permit.
Okay. Do you need a, we, I asked you one before, for a light ballast and a light fixture, do you need a permit to change the light ballast?
No, you don't.
So, but changing the fixture?
Yes, you do.
You would need a permit. Sink fixtures?
Say that again.
And I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm just, there's questions that were posed to me, so that's why I'm trying to get them out in the public. I'm not, so sink fixtures, if you change a faucet fixture and you, same location, you go down to Home Depot and buy a fixture, we need to, need to come to the counter and get a permit for changing a faucet fixture?
Again, it's in the handout, and it's not because we want it. Some people say, well, it's because you want it.
Again, I'm just trying to get it for the public, because there's been some...
Right, right.
Understanding, and that's what I'm trying to help in the interpretation.
And under the mandate from the green code and the energy code, yes, you do need to come in and get a permit so that we can verify the compliance.
Things that are coming from you, it's coming from the state. That's what I'm trying to...
That's correct.
A comment from the city manager real quick.
Yeah, not to interrupt, but you just made the point I wanted to emphasize because from some of the reaction, it, maybe they're just amused by learning what the state law is, but just wanted to emphasize, this isn't our direction or requirement, this is the state.
Right. And that's what I'm just trying to help in the interpretation, and that's, that's all I'm...
But you're, I just wanted to clarify, the questions you're asking are, according to the state code...
According to the state code, right.
Are you required to have a permit for...
Right. Qualifying on all, it's, I know it's not you with a magic wand, it's your, as the chief has identified, it's just making sure that people understand that there, there, things have changed. Like you said, it's, so that's why I'm asking those, because those are some of the questions I had posed to you before.
Right.
If we were replacing a flapper valve in a toilet?
That's a repair.
Okay, so, that was one I'd asked you before as well. So, I just wanted the people to understand, again, it's not you, it's coming down from the state, so...
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Council, most of these come in as a result of more than just a toilet change-up. They're coming in for a refurb, they're coming in for a remodel. Very seldom are we seeing a toilet.
Well, no, but Home Depot sells a lot of a toilets. So, I mean, and a lot of faucets and a lot of light fixtures that go in and out of there, so I'm just, you know, getting that off, out to the public to understand that, again, it's not you, it's according to the state, that they have to do that, because, you know, there's, half the products probably sold at Home Depot needing permits that, you know, people aren't coming to the front counter, there'd be, there'd be a line out the door, you know, for a lot of these items, so, all right, thank you.
Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah, I'm just going to make a couple of real quick comments here, and I want to tie it into Mr. Whitmore. I think probably 95% of the people in this city think that the state is far overreaching on what they're doing here. You know, my home is my home, I've paid for it. Why am I being told what I can put in it and do? Stay out of my business is what my attitude is. But when I sell, or whatever, it happens. Mr. Whitmore's letter, I have a copy of it. If I recall correctly, this hot tub that Mr. Whitmore built was back in the late '70s when it was installed. Anybody in here tell me what the square footage in the late '70s was? What were you allowed to do in your own backyard in the late '70s to put a hot tub in? Nobody...
Rafael, come on up, come on up.
Yeah, I'd just be very curious. I'd be very curious if we could dictate to me what the electric codes were then. Are we causing a retrograde now?
Yes, again, the regulations haven't really changed that much as to what is exempted from a permit in the building code.
What was the change then?
I'm sorry?
What was the change from the late '70s to now then on, say, a hot tub pad?
It hasn't. It's always been 120 square feet.
Always has.
Ever since I can remember, since 1997 in the UBC.
Well, this is the late '70s, though, when this was installed.
No, I agree.
The fences, what was the fence, the city code for fence height at this time?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here then, but I'm sure it probably was six feet.
I had left, you know, the year before, I graduated high school and split. I certainly don't remember either.
Right.
But Mr. Whitmore remembers. He built it, he did it then. It's been there steady since. You've done nothing since then. Am I correct, Mr. Whitmore? He's nodding his head, yes. So, why are we still going after all this old retro things? You know, are we not used to the term grandfathering or let it alone?
Let's try not to blur the lines between what code enforcement is doing versus our discussion this evening. Code enforcement is, I believe, that case.
Hits a building.
And code enforcement refers them to building code sections.
Okay, so we're related. No, I just, you know, I just, the disgruntlement and then listening to the state regulation here, I understand you have to enforce it and we have to impose it on the citizens, but, I mean, there is a certain degree of sanity that should be applied.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, I'm not trying to preach on this, but when the chief talked about the passion with which some of the, you know, with which the team embraces the commitments that are before them, I'm reminded that, as I hired and stepped into this position, that I was required to take an oath of office that include that I'd enforce those very laws. And I think it sounded an awful lot like the same oath each of you has taken. And so, Councilmember Starbuck, I agree. I scratched my head and sometimes with some futility say, wow, welcome to California over some of the issues that are here. And it's a lot difficult at times to do business in this state and to be a city in this state. And I just want to separate, though, between, you know, we certainly do have opinions over whether something should or should not be in the law, but to the extent it is, several of us in this room have taken an oath that we would stand up and enforce those laws as is required.
My intent was to share the how and the why. I hope I've fulfilled that obligation.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we're going to open this up for public comment. Okay, Chief, are you going to do the second part, or do you want to take these separately? Who's going to do the second part? Okay, so let's open this up. Councilor Mosby.
I was just gonna, because I made two council requests, public comment.
So we'll do the second one next. Okay, we're going to open this up to public comment. You'll have three minutes. Please come forward so we don't waste a lot of time with you, you know, walking across the thing. So come forward, just line up over here on the right-hand side of the room.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I appreciate the information that was provided this evening, but in all honesty, I think most professionals here know that. I think the greater underlying issue is that the community is not being kept informed of all the changes that have been occurring. I'm going to share a little bit from a perspective as a lender who's financed several different types of projects from construction to rehab. When we start in a construction loan, there's a very specific timeline that's given to a homeowner. That timeline outlines everything from start to finish. There's one big thing, though, that we can never quite put our hands on, and I think that's what most people here would really like to know, is how much time are we going to be within the city permit process? When someone goes out and gets a loan, they're servicing debt during that time. So what their community, at least I know with some of my clients, are looking for is some accountability on behalf of the city. It has to be two-way. And so what I didn't hear today was, when an example was given of the process, is what the expectation is for the service delivery. What timeframe we should expect, given certain types of projects, from the time it's turned in to the time a feedback is given. What's done to monitor that progress in the event that those timeframes are not met? What's a consumer's or a contractor's ability to come back when the project starts being delayed beyond their scope of work, their mistakes, or their issues, and it simply becomes a time constraint on behalf of the city? I've had homeowners who have been back and forth in plan check, and I'm not stating that it's solely the, it was the problem of the city, but a month or two delay on a debt service of, let's say, $300,000 is potentially, you know, with monthly interest payments, several thousand dollars. So when somebody comes in and they're on a very tight budget, and they are delayed from the permit process to no fault of their own, they're incurring potentially thousands of dollars. That's where this becomes very problematic. When someone starts and it's not clearly defined what projects take a plant site, which ones don't, which ones will require to go out to a specialty inspector rather than be in-house, when these types of items are not identified upfront, these cause delays, and delays cause significant economic losses to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Great, Leslie. I was just wondering why a lot of the homeowners and stuff go out and buy a product...
I was just wondering why a lot of the homeowners and stuff go out and buy a product, say, at Home Depot that you mentioned, how they can sell a product that's not gonna make it through an inspection? If that's the case, if they can sell a faucet, or sell a toilet, or sell something to somebody that's not in code, that's pretty tough on the buyer. I think that something should be done with that, and they should be marked at the stores of what's code and what's not code. It's not the homeowners, I don't think, fault to go try and buy something and install it and then get burned for it if somebody comes in and inspects it. I think it might be a good idea to try and do that.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Dan Olivera. Well, I did a lot of research before I came down here tonight, and I'm not gonna talk about any of it but one. I have a customer in mind that had a fire in their home back in September, no structural damage whatsoever, and we're January seventeenth, we still don't have a permit, and I want to know why, when there's no structural damage, and I'm required to submit a set of plans, a complete breakdown of everything that's gonna be done to the house, and these people just want to be back in it. It's not happening. And then my customer comes to the city, and the building official tells him, well, all he has to do is mark where the smoke detectors are going. Well, I've got a three-page correction sheet here, and that's one of many items on it that were already addressed on the plans. That's what I want to know. It has been a ridiculous process from day one, and I've got a lot of them here, and they were all done prior to two years ago, and they went off without a hitch. I guarantee you, the houses are safe, and these people have a well-built structure after a loss. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Debbie McComb. I am a licensed general contractor and also a licensed real estate agent. What I want to do is just bring this personal to you. I know it sounds petty when we talk about a permit for a toilet or a permit for a kitchen faucet, but I had a discussion with the building official, and he was very kind and spent a lot of time with me, and I also understand that he's mandated to manage his code enforcement by higher rules. However, Mr. Starbuck, if I, if you go in and get a new toilet or a new faucet, and you say, okay, I'm gonna go get a permit, plumber comes in, somebody has to be there for the inspection, somebody has to pay that plumber's extra time, so now we're talking about a plumber that has to obtain the permit and be there for an inspection if you're at work and you can't be there. So now the general public has probably just added one to two hours on the cost of something simple like replacing a faucet or a toilet. Building official comes in, he walks in and he's, as you see in many houses that have fluorescent lighting in the ceiling, they've been replaced by can lighting or track lighting or something. They've got new kitchen counters, you know, they may have had a licensed electrician come in, they may have made a quad outlet instead of a single outlet or something. The official comes in, and he says, lovely kitchen, we're gonna check out your faucet here, but I noticed you have a nineteen-sixties house, and you have can lighting in your ceiling, you have track lighting. I believe back in the sixties, they gave you one outlet somewhere that you might find for your coffee pot. Now, I'm gonna suggest, I'm gonna, did you get all these permitted? Well, I don't know, I bought this house from five owners ago, you know, I don't know what they did. Well, I'm really sorry for your plight, however, these things need to be permitted, so we're gonna help you get your home legal. So to me, what has happened is, by the cause of allowing someone to come and look at a faucet, I've just given them what I call an unlawful search warrant on my home to come in and inflict problems and things that may not have been in my control, they may have been in my control, but as an owner, I should take the oneness of those responsibilities. If I do something that is supposed to be by code, I may be a handy homeowner, that I can do it exactly like the code. The code is there to say it should be like that. If you don't build it like that, and you take an extension cord and you stick things together, and your house catches on fire, then my goodness, that's the responsibility of the idiot that did it. I don't think that the city should take the time or the effort and spend the money when they're already in deficit spending on, in the building department, and have frivolous inspections based on things that are purchased by law that can no longer have lead in them, they can no longer be high-flowing in water usage. It's already been mandated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Mayor of City Council, I'm Bob Holloway. I just finished a little project with the building department. I'm building a new garage, it took me four and a half months to get my permit. I went through three building officials before I got it taken care of. You know, the last building official gave me forty-six changes to do on my plans, when the other two building officials said all I had to do was put, place for the signature for the soils guy, the engineer, and the architect, and all that on the front page. I told him, I said, you didn't even look at my plans, did you? And he said, yeah, I did, and he went in and got it, and he brought the front sheet out, and he handed it to me, and he give it to me like that, and he says, there it is. I said, for a building official, I said, you know I can't get a permit on the front page. I can't get a permit, I gotta have, I gotta have my plumbing, my heating, my electrical, the engineering, the earthquake, everything, and I even have to sprinkle my garage. So, you know, I'm not in a big hurry, so to me, it's not bad, but you take, like Danny Olivera, he's in business, he needs that, he needs that plan right now. He can't wait around, because it's costing him money, and it's, the poor guy that's doing it is, you know, he's looking at Danny and saying, well, you don't know what the hell you're doing, because he can't get it through the city, you know? But if they keep sending it back, you, he can't do it, you know? I only had to bring my plan in one time, and it would have been approved if I'd have had them numbers on there, but, you know, because I had to go through three building officials, you know, it took me four and a half months. Now, you're talking about the codes. Well, I've been a plumber for fifty-five years, and I've never got a permit to change a P-trap, because if I'm out there and I'm cleaning out somebody's drain and the P-trap breaks, I can't run down to City Hall and spend an hour getting a permit and then run back there and do this. You're, the people of Lompoc are gonna suffer really bad if they put this in there. I mean, it's the people of Lompoc that are suffering, and you're gonna put all the plumbers and electricians and everybody out of business, because everybody has to get a permit, and I think it's ridiculous. The building official said that the, it's been in there, you can't break the rear of a trap, it's always been in the plumbing code, but nobody's enforced it, because it's not a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Darrell Clegg, I'm a licensed general contractor, as well as a home inspector. In my contracting business, I basically work as a handyman. So I just want to point out the law of unintended consequences. You, I do a lot of rental turnovers, I go into a condo and, you know, refurbish it for the next tenant, and that might require placing a faucet, a trap, a light fixture, the list goes on. I'm gonna have a list of ten, fifteen building permits I might have to go down and get for this. Well, that's gonna raise my fees like double. Well, guess what that owner's gonna do? He's gonna stop calling me, he's loved using me because I'm licensed, so I know he's gonna get it done right. He's gonna start calling the unlicensed handyman, or the gardener that does this kind of stuff on the side, and we're gonna end up getting all of our homes and our houses with substandard work, because they're gonna skirt this issue. Nobody's gonna pay me two thousand dollars to do a five-hundred-dollar job, it's just not gonna happen. It's, it would be nice if it did, and we raised the level of code enforcement across the board, but I guarantee you, people aren't gonna pay for it. People are just gonna either do it themselves, not get a permit, don't tell anybody, it's gonna happen that way, and I would hate to see that happen, because that's, then we're going backwards instead of going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public comment on that item. Chief.
So the why and the how is pretty clear. What I didn't say is we don't have staff to enforce everything we're mandated to enforce. We run the building team with less than half the number of personnel of a city our size and complexity. So are the codes there? Absolutely, they are. Are we going out looking for the guy that busted the P-trap? I gotta be honest with you, staff doesn't have time to do that. Do we have a mandate if we see it? Yes, we have a mandate, and that's it, pure and simple. Some of the delays, I shared with you some of the communication breakdowns, has everything, many times it has everything to do with communication, and what's asked for, and what's delivered. So the team works very, very hard to overcome some of the challenges. Somebody referenced two years ago. Not responsible two years ago, as we peel back the onions, four building officials, six inspectors, we had somebody at the counter, the public works director had his hands full running public works. We're very busy, we've got a competent team, we're not gonna go out knocking on doors, looking for broken P-traps, looking for somebody that changed the toilet from something they got from Home Depot, we don't have time, but if it comes in in a plan, we have to enforce it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I hope that was at least informative.
Can I ask the chief one question?
Sure.
On the toilet change-out, sorry, up and down, the new reg is a 1.4? Are we mandated, are we mandated, everybody to change out their 1.9s to 1.4s?
1.20.
1.2?
Yes.
So, so all the others are mandated now to go to the 1.2s?
Yes.
Guess you gotta have to eat, you gotta have to make it soluble, right?
Yeah, you gotta flush it more times, and it wastes more water, but...
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is multifamily dwelling occupancy, life safety inspection program.
It's gonna be an Advil kind of night, I'm telling you. Okay. One of the other requests, and this one came from Councilmember Mosby, has to do with our multifamily unit, our multi, multifamily occupancy inspection program, which is an interesting program. So I always like to brag about the mission, by the way, the same mission that we have over in the building department, and we revisit this mission every year, we live by it, I actually just presented this to four new firefighters that started today in our rookie academy. So again, I know you guys are sick of me talking about codes, but believe me, California Code of Regulations Title Nineteen, Division One, Section Three Twelve dictates that the provisions of the California Code of Regulations Title Nineteen, Division One, which is where the California Fire Code lives, and it's a mandated code, being enforced by the chief of the department. Simple, to the point. The reality, in the city of Lompoc, the fire department's been conducting business inspections, and multifamily occupancies are business, business inspections for quite some time. Definition, here's our Rs. Part of this is the actual training program we do, we will be, we do with the crews. So what we're talking about is basically R2s, residential occupancies containing more than two dwelling units, where occupants are primarily permanent in nature, apartment houses, boarding houses, convents, I don't think we have any, dormitories, fraternities, sororities, monasteries, vacation timeshare properties, which is interesting, I believe we're, it's shaping up that we're one of the few cities on the coast that right now is not regulating timeshares, VRBOs, what's that other one? Nimbus? No. Airbus? Airbnb? Thanks. So, this is, you know, some folks say, well, those are bungalows, yes, they are, but they're also an R2 occupancy, they're more than two units, well-kept. Anybody in the room here, if this is your property, kudos, and obviously, taking around the holidays. This is the more standard, when we talk about multifamily occupancies, this is kind of what folks think about, an apartment building, you know, this one's, looks good on the outside, it's got a fairly new roof, I remember when one of our contractors did that roof a couple years ago, another site, because we do look at fire lanes, et cetera, pretty well-kept. So, we talk about justification, why do we do, other than the fact that we're mandated to do these, you know, a lot of folks look at fire and life safety inspection process negatively, however, we look at it as a positive opportunity to share information, assure life safety, and help our business owners stay in business. You burn out an apartment, you're not gonna get any rent out of it. We promote a safer working and living environment, safer building for visitors, et cetera. So here's a fact, multifamily occupancies, just by their nature, have a history of incidents that have potential, left my working document somewhere, have the potential for multiple injuries and life loss events. I will tell you, we're going to multifamily occupancies on a regular basis. One of the most common calls from a fire perspective that we have at these occupancies is kitchen fires, overloading of circuits, overpressure vessels, we call those food on the stove, not an unusual call. So the inspection program gets us an opportunity to work with the owners and the property managers to help them educate their tenants. So the objective for the program, and this, by the way, is the same objective for every business inspection that we do. We've got roughly fifteen to seventeen-hundred inspectable occupancies in our data, thank you, in our data, that database. Provide fire safety and prevention education to our citizens and property owners, encourage the business property owner to be involved, comply with legal mandates and responsibilities that are consistent with our municipal, the municipal code that's passed by resolution, and the mandated California Fire Code. Checklist, Dina. So the packets that are going out to the property owners are very similar, some of the information is very similar to what we use to populate our database. So we use a checklist approach, we share in the checklist, in the packet, that packet you're getting is actually going out next week, we will make copies available on the table in the back. What is it? What do we look for? What information can we provide? What is an R2? Why are there fees? What is our legal and moral justification? And we talk about our billing company. There's no magic, there's no Mr. Wizard behind the curtain here. The more information we share with a business owner, the easier our life is and the safer our community is going to be, and that's the intent of, that's the intent of all of our company inspection programs, our business inspection programs, sorry. So what is it? It's a systematic process to verifying compliance with life safety, hazard identification, corrective measures, and public education. Many times when we're out on these properties, we have an opportunity to interact with the tenants, we have an opportunity to ask them questions, a lot of times we talk with their children, and by law, technically, we should be inspecting every single unit, by law, technically. In our effort to work with property owners, one of the reasons we provide them with a checklist is so they can, to some degree, self-police. We also provide the property owners an opportunity to self-certify. Law requires that homes and rental... Law requires that homes and rental units have working smoke alarms, and in the case that they have fossil fuels in the area, gas heaters, et cetera, they must have working CO alarms. I will tell you, it's not unusual for us to go out to an incident in an apartment and find that neither exist. So hopefully with this program, we'll get a little more awareness. So I showed you the good. I showed you the nice properties. So why do we inspect? We inspect because unfortunately, we have properties like this in our community. This is what's called fire loading. This one was brought to my attention. This one came into me from the field. I don't run much anymore. I went walking down the hall very briskly and said, get somebody out there right away. All of these refrigerators were unrestrained. Now, some of you are in the room, you're old enough to remember why we had laws passed that you can't do this, because we had multiple children die in refrigerators. Again, fire loading, every once in a while, we have a carport fire, and I'll be doggone if we don't burn all the cars up in, in, in the carport. Right here, yes, we do have a code violation. Unfortunately, the way this is manufactured, in the event it catches fire, it's gonna take out this whole carport. Two weeks ago, we were doing an inspection. What's wrong with this picture? It's in the garage. What's wrong with the garage? Contractors, is there a rescue window in a garage? No. Do we get garage fires? Yeah, we get garage fires. This is another reason why we do these inspections. And I will tell you, I seriously doubt the property owner or the property manager knew about this until we called them. One of my favorites. Chris, where are you? Is that legal? So how did? So how did we find this? The crews were on a call, and they, sorry, it's not funny, but it's ironic to a degree. Crews were on a call, they saw two orange extension cords running out of an apartment down the hallway, down the walkway, followed it to this breaker box. And that's what they found. This is why we do these inspections. This is another reason why. This family got out of, got out. Unfortunately, they were displaced for the length of time it took to refurbish this apartment, and I believe the one next door also was uninhabitable, and the one below. Same thing right here. This is, this is, this is an apartment, basically a room and contents fire. This is why we do the inspections. This is why we talk to the property owners. This is why we talk to the property managers, because many of our property owners are out of the area and they hire somebody to take care of their properties for them. So there's been a discussion of fees. So actually, prior to January 5th, 2016, I believe it was around 2013 or 14, the fire department did a complete time-in-motion study of everything we do relative to cost recovery, and I brought forward to the council, and Councilman Vega and Mosby, it was, and Councilmember Osbornes, before you sat on the dais, and we updated the fire department fees. All justified. Shortly after that, the city engaged a consultant to take a look at all of our fees. The one thing I didn't do, and you'll see it in a minute, I did not calculate it in overhead costs, because everything I bring to the council, I do everything I can to justify. So in 2016, January 5th, 2016, council did pass a resolution and may, and it, in effect, did a complete and comprehensive review and implemented an updated master fee study throughout the city. And it mandated that we, as department heads, take a look at it at least every five years. The intent of fees actually goes all the way back to Proposition 13, when we had a very loud edict from the voters that we were to run like a business and we were to look seriously at cost recovery. So the calculations that, that the, that go into these fees, per the spreadsheet that the consultants worked up, a percent of the hourly rate, and that's dependent on who's doing the work, a calculation for fringe benefits, a calculation for maintenance overhead, and something I didn't do, because I'm not smart enough, is a calculation for city overhead costs. For the fire department, for the most part, that's why our fees went up just a little The process of the inspection, and this all goes into the time in motion. Before the crews go out, they research the occupancy for the history to include past incidents, violations, and ownership. We wanna know if, if the database has a property manager in there, we wanna know who that is. It count, the process accounts for travel to and from the inspection location, it accounts for time spent conducting the inspection, and then the time updating the records to include documentation of the results and notification to the property owner or manager, and re-inspections, re-inspection or re-inspections as needed. In a perfect world, it's one trip. Not so perfect. So this project got out of the box a little sooner than I wanted to, and as a result, some, some feedback from some of the managers and owners, we took a real good, hard look at the way we bill for these. And so here's what, what we've come up with. I'll give you an example, and I won't use the property owner's name, but let's say a property owner owns a full block of multi-unit occupancies, and there might be three units here, three units here, three units here, three units here, they share a common lot line. They're all in one block. So that's a no-brainer for me. That's one trip. That's one research, that one, that's one trip to and fro, and it's going to be billed instead of multiple individual permits. It's going, we're gonna go to the total number of units and bill it that way. Versus when you have multiple property owners, not within the same block, this is the same scenario, three units here, three units down the block, different owners, different managers, then their permits are all going to be driven by the number of units they own. When I, when I brought the fire department's updated fees to council, I also proposed that we utilize a cost recovery program called Fire Recovery USA. One of the reasons I proposed that particular company is because our records management system that houses our inspection program is collaborative with this company's software. So we do a data dump every week, and they send out the bills. Once the invoice is paid, then they generate the electronic permit on our behalf. And we've been using this now since 2014. We're pleased with the results. Could we do better? Absolutely, we could do better. All other fees, other than the permits, are collected by us locally. So that is the inspection program. One thing I didn't do, we talked about fees, go ahead, Dina. So what I'm handing out, what Dina's handing out are, is right out of the master fee schedule, five pages. Five pages in the master fee schedule pertain to fire department fees. The multifamily unit section is about two and a half inches. So you can see every fee that the fire depart, I was gonna bring you the master fee schedule, but it's a monster, and I've already killed enough trees tonight. So that's our fee schedule. It's been fully justified by the consultant, passed by, passed by the council, and that's all I have for you, other than questions.
Councilwoman Starbuck.
Yeah, chief, do we inspect the housing authority properties?
If they're more than three units, yes.
So we are paid a fee from them, then?
We charge them a fee for everything.
Okay, just curious.
Including plant checks.
Councilmember Mosby.
When you do this inspection, what does it entail? Are you going inside the buildings and inside the bedrooms and?
By law, technically, we should be inspecting every single unit. If we have a property manager, then we will work with that property manager, they will have gotten the checklist ahead of time. We prefer that the property manager only let us do spot checks, because they have to give 24 hours' notice before we can go in. In the event the property manager doesn't wanna work with us, then we have to make an appointment so they can notify the tenants, and we will go in and inspect.
So are you going in every unit and inspecting inside bedrooms?
Only if we have to.
And what determines about only if you have to?
Well, it's the working relationship with the property manager and, and the property owner. Giving them a sample of what we're looking for helps, and giving them the option of allowing us to spot check versus going into every single unit.
You know, of course, you, you inspect every, all the common area, right?
All the common area, all the water closets, all the parking, all the electrical, the exit stairwells, the storage area under the exit stairwells, the condition of the exit stairwells. Some of the facilities have mandated lighting, that's all inspected.
And, so if you, would you knock on a door and you say, hey, can I come in? Or what do you do? Because you don't just show up and?
Well, normally, we like to just show up. However, the way the, the lease and rental agreements are, they have to give 24-hour notice. So what, what we will be, what we're working on now is a pre-notice to, this is why this packet's going out, pre-notice to the manager and to, and/or owner that we're, we'd like to schedule your, your units for an inspection on this day. You gotta be there. And we would like to have access. And we will discuss with them how much of an inconvenience that is or is not, and if it is a huge inconvenience, we will work with them on working through the inspection sheets.
And what, what is the process if the tenant in the apartment says, no, you're not coming in?
Well, yeah, per the rental agreement, and I know I've got at least one property manager in here, Scott, per the rental agreement, they have the right of entry as long as they're noticed. Now, if the tenant denies that right of entry, and if the property manager or the owner is not cooperative, then just as we do in any other business, this is, these are businesses, we would get an inspection warrant. I don't believe we're going to have to go to that extreme, because I believe so far that the property managers, the owners, wanna work with us just as much as we wanna work with them. It's to everybody's benefit to keep the units occupied.
So what is the, the relative newness? This is something you're already doing, or how long have you been doing this?
We've been doing it for a while, it's just been a little spotty, a while, like years. It's been on the books. These fees, these permits have been on the books for a while. It's just been spotty. One of the reasons it's spotty is, over the years, what's taken place, typically, these are all done off of the engine company. What's taken place now, over the years, is the call volume has got to a point, for both stations, all three pieces of apparatus, that they're busy at the times when it's the most convenient for our business owners. So now, it's falling back on, on Dina, on some of our extra help that we can get in from time to time, our light-duty people. I've got an injured firefighter right now, this is his program. And then we're proposing to transition to a combination building and fire inspector, hopefully next year, who will help us take some of this load.
And I, and I can understand with your, your common area inspections, and I can understand the business inspections, any, any true business, open to the public business. Somebody's apartment is not open to the public, and, you know, for the record, personally myself, I think we need to stay out of people's apartments. I, I mean, if somebody wants an inspection and, and you give them the opportunity to come in, you're, you're not gonna, by doing your inspections, there are some things you're not gonna catch, and that's bad habits. Candles. You know, candles do a lot of fires, as you, you know, you know.
Just had one the other day.
Right. Bad cooking habits. Leaving the stove unattended. You know, some things you're not going to catch with your inspection, and you, you know, teaching the people some levels of responsibility without a doubt is, and having volunteer, if people want people to come in and inspect, or if property owners want you to inspect, and I, I think in certain cases, it might be advantageous for their insurance reasons to have you guys come do it at level and inspect.
We actually do have some property owners that request that we come in, particularly when they're changing insurance. You know, the reason that we're refocusing attention is because we're seeing an uptick in incidents. And it is my hope that as we implement the program, we will see a decline in the incidents.
You made a comment about where we could be inspecting R1s, and the law provides for that. You, I'm paraphrasing. Single-family residents, you said, no, we're not, there's nothing in there that entitles anything for an inspection to?
Only if we're already in there on another emergency.
Okay.
Help I fall on and can't get up, we take advantage of those. We, we help Mr. and Mrs. Smith back in bed, sometimes fix them a meal, sometimes wash their dishes, and while we're in there, we check their smoke alarms.
And, but R2s, so we're not going into duplexes, only triplexes and greater?
That's what a definition of an R2 is.
But even though we could go into a duplex?
No, it's not an R2.
Okay. Because it's a business.
It doesn't require a business license.
Okay.
R3s, R3s and above. Three units and above.
If you're renting two things, you're a business as well as renting three, so, I got you. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna put this up for public comment. Again, please come forward, line up if you have something to comment on.
Dan Oliver again. What I'd really like to know is what the percentage of calls for service for medical emergencies versus fire emergencies is. I know we have records of that. And I'd like to know, basically, if you're not gonna inspect every rental residence, then that shows prejudice. In my eyes. I mean, I have houses and apartments, but I would think that you'd wanna inspect every rental if you're gonna do anything at all. If that only makes sense. Because the landlords are gonna pass the fees on to the tenants. They have to. It's just like utility increases or any other increase. Everybody passes it on to the tenant. So I'd like to see some statistics on it first. Then you can quantify the results, and you'll know the veracity of what you're gonna be doing with these inspections, what the, what the overall impact's gonna be on the tenant and the homeowner. Thank you.
Mr. Oliveris, I recommend, annually, the fire department reports to us, if you get a copy of their most recent annual report, that information is broken down.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I take one exception to some of the photos, and the reason I take exception is because on several occasions now, this year, in front of everyone except Councilwoman Osborn, I have complained about the illegal dumping. And I'm glad that somebody's finally acknowledging that, I forgot the term that he exactly used, fire buildup or whatever buildup is a problem. Because I can tell you, as a landlord and as a homeowner both, because it happens in both my home and it happens on my commercial building, and it happens on my single-family rentals and my multifamily rentals, is that there's a large group of people, albeit not a lot, but there's groups of people that go around and they dump everything. I've told you, toilets, refrigerators, couches, beds, you name it. You walk out, TVs, TVs are horrible too, because then the recyclers come and kick the glass and try to look for the gold or silver or whatever I think supposedly is valuable in there, and leave all this trash behind. I've become very frustrated, because several years ago, I came, I had pictures, I had driver's license of people that were dumping in my apartments, and nobody would do anything. I called, I called and wanted to- I called and wanted to have somebody do something. So I think the first step, if we have a problem, is rather than start to point the finger at the property owner, is to start enforcing the people that are throwing the trash because they'll go in the morning before the trash trucks come and your trash is all piled up against your garage because they've gotten all the recycles out before the trucks come and pick them up. Or they'll dump things, that's one item. The other item is, is I believe that a similar ordinance in San Luis Obispo was put in haphazardly and that city is under current litigation for unequal protection under the law, discrimination and a couple of other items. So you might want to traverse this very delicately and really look into it. I couldn't find any policy on this up until a few days ago that was an actual written policy that I can see that was approved by the city council. I found a fee study, but I couldn't find a policy. And I'm not against code enforcement, but in the spirit of transparency, I'd like to know what the policy is, what we need to do. I rent as Section 8 tenants. I have to go through a rigorous inspectionary period and, you know, and it costs to accommodate somebody. It costs money because I have to sometimes wait one or two weeks for an inspection. I got to make sure I'm there for an eight-hour period. If this is another layer on top of a layer on top of a layer, these are significant costs that are only going to increase housing. Now, again, nobody's, so it's good to have the policy. I'd like to see what's there. So as a landlord, I'll incorporate it into my lease agreement if I have to. But I would just, again, be cautious on how you go around implementing the policy because I don't think it's really been implemented in writing.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Ruth McKenna. I just want to say I heard the fire chief say something about it costs a lot of money for the fire department to go out and inspect these homes and it has to be more than duplex, has to be triplex and more. So I don't know, I was thinking as I heard him speak, maybe since it's so costly for the fire department to go out and inspect these homes, why don't we have, put in place where we have a class and offer it maybe three times a year, either a free class, you know, to these people on, you know, good cooking habits and talk about candles and, you know, whatever topic and whatever the fire department to come up with and say, you know, this is a fire hazard, this is a fire hazard or this is how we can prevent fire. Just my thought. All right, thank you.
And, you know, it is a great idea and I believe twice a year, the fire department does put on, I believe you have it in the Home Depot parking lot, they put on a similar type thing where the public is invited. But it's a great idea and I think we could expand upon it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment. There's no action required on this, it was for information only. I know there's some information that a lot of you didn't agree with, some of the council doesn't agree with it, but our city officials are required by law to enforce it, so. Information, I'm going to do one more and then we'll take a break. Okay, that's a quick one. Okay, we're going to go on to item number six, which is a discussion, possible action, change meeting location. Okay, who's going to handle this one? Patrick, who's going to handle this item? Okay, Councilman Vega.
Councilman Mosby and myself had a, were participating in an ad hoc committee meeting with the committees and various commissions to get their input to see if more transparency might be allowed for the public to attending these meetings because of possibly the locations being at various other locations other than council. I think some of the input and the results were pretty conclusive. We have several committees that asked to remain in their present location. We had the Library Commission saying that their location was accommodating and open and transparent and because of their times, they thought was sufficient. I have the Senior Commission that asked because of their location. I believe it's at the Dewey Center, Dick Dewey Center. They said it was accommodating for them and it had handicap access and everything was, they were comfortable. The Youth Commission, still kind of subjective. The representative from the Youth Commission said they were comfortable at the park, at the recreation, the Anderson Recreation Center. And we're here to accommodate if they're comfortable there. We thought maybe there would be some positives. Councilman Mosby and myself did comment that maybe a little exposure for them, you know, learning up and coming and learning the process of the city government might be proved to be a positive here to be in the council chambers. All the other committees and commissions seemed, at least the ones that showed up, the Airport Commission did not have a representative there to get their input on whether they'd be open to having their meetings changed here in council chambers. We thought for the access to the public, it'd be much easier if you knew that there was a central location for some of the bigger commissions and committees. And plus, we have the accommodations here and we have more than one room here that's available for various meetings without overlap as far as timeframes and scheduling. So unless, Councilman Mosby, if you have something else to say about this?
The Library Commission was okay, the representatives there were okay with where it is. I don't know if you mentioned that one, but the, it seems like the Parks Commission was looking at relocating over this direction.
Yep.
And I believe Beautification Commission to relocate this direction. I'm glad to see that Public Safety has relocated into here, which is good. And Utility Commission, when I was on it, was back there and has moved here, so. I think that was a positive movement. So I think unless we can hear from somebody from the Airport Commission tonight, it'd be, I know the meetings that I've made down there were a little rough when you get a few people from the public there and you're not really open to accommodate a lot down there. I think it'd be a little nicer to be in this room. They feel a little comfortable, I know, down there in their own little back room or front room or whatever it might be, but. I think the two main commissions that wanted, looking at moving would be Parks and Beautification, either in here or in the, what do you guys call the room up that way? The Administrative Conference Room. Okay. Other than that, I agree with what you said. Maybe we could hear something from a couple of Airport Commissioners.
Yeah, we could hear from some of the public, but I think that we're on behalf of the public and because of some of the transparency meetings that have happened already, we would like you to be part of the process and your input is important. And I don't know if all of you are aware, sometimes when a commission or a committee meeting is posted, if you know that somewhere at the Dewey Center, somewhere at the Park and Anderson Recreation Center, somewhere at the airport. I just think a more central location would be more cohesive to all of us being more involved together. So with that.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone have anything to say?
We've heard from you enough.
Ow.
I can see your back is doing well, you jumped right out of that chair.
He kicked me. If I could, we have attempted to move Public Safety back to the council. It is not available for the upcoming meeting. Prior to us going to a rotation between police and fire, we did meet in the admin conference room. By the time we get the Public Safety Commissioners in there and staff, there's absolutely no place left to sit. This is not available for our next meeting. If it's available, we're here, we're all about it. We're trying.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, Maria Hall. I'm a resident and also the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I just wanted to put in there that if the airport does move here, their commission, they're the same night as EDC, so they would need to go in that Administrative Conference Room.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ed Mandibles, Airport Commission. Just a background, when we first started, when the city first took over the airport, created the Airport Commission, we met right here. We used to sit up there right where you are. And we had, started off having like two or three people and that was the only, for the whole room. It got a little heated when we had some controversial issue. In the Airport Commission, we have it down there at the airport, down at the airport Pilot Lounge because it accommoda, always is accommodated up until just recently with the motorsports thing. It's the only time, we've never been able to, you know, we've had some standing room only just because of that one issue. It's the only time. What we also found out, why we changed from here to there, was a cost issue. There's a custodian that has to open up this room and there were some other people that had to be here, open the door, that kind of thing. And that was a cost that they didn't feel necessary for two or three people. So that's why we moved to the airport.
And Ed, you have had some meetings here in recently when you expected large crowds, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
So, so what I'm saying is possibly, if there's another issue that brings up, you could always post and...
Absolutely.
A different location.
Yeah, we're pretty flexible when it comes to that as we did for that, for that subject matter. We sat there because we had quite a few people that wouldn't fit in that little room, so.
Good.
That might be, that might be a good compromise. I mean, it always has been that way, so we can do that, we're easy, so.
So your preference is stay at the airport right now?
Yeah, I think so. Once this issue goes away, it'll go down to one or two people. We usually have two people that are public, that are public unless there are other people that want to get involved and we always welcome that. We've never excluded anybody nor have we ever locked anybody out of that room when we were having a meeting.
Good. Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, excuse me, Anne Rouger. I am right now President or Chair of the Library Commission. And our meeting, I wanted to invite the public to come to our meetings. If we're going to stay on the second Tuesday of the month, we meet at 10:00 AM at the library. And it's a good chance to get to know your library. If some of you have never been there, it's a very active organization and full of children and teenagers and seniors and adults and they've got a lot of programs going and I would invite you to come and see what we're doing. So you're more than welcome to come. The meetings are noticed in, on the website and our minutes are on the website also for the city. So you're most welcome to come and I invite you all to come and see what's happening at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comment. We're going to take a break in a few minutes, but I, Patrick, did you want me to try to rearrange the schedule again?
Mayor, I was just going to ask you, in changing, in your recommended change, you were going to move item nine in front of number item seven. I was just going to ask if you might move it rather in front of item eight, allow item seven to go forward as scheduled. It should be less than five minutes. I think it's a very routine matter at this point and because we have a representative of the applicant here.
Okay, so I'm going to make that request and for that change, I'll again need two council members.
First of all, I'd like us to finish what we're doing here and take action on this, if we're going to take action, okay?
Well, there isn't...
It has possible action here and I'd like to take that.
Oh, okay.
This set up for possible action, this isn't just a discussion.
Okay, it wasn't on the agenda for possible action, okay, sure.
Sure it is.
Okay, go ahead.
Says council discussion and possible action.
Okay, so what's the desire of the council? Go ahead.
I do have a question for Mr. Wilkie. Regarding the impact of cost of opening up the City Hall facility to groups that don't normally meet here that have met at other locations because there's either staff already there or the time of meeting has been more convenient to the staff assigned to them, what is, what would that impact for those that would be considering moving here on nights that we normally might not have staff here?
I'll just use examples of a couple that already meet here. And typically, we don't have any custodial staff on after about three. So it's basically the responsibility of the staff that are overseeing the meeting to make sure we're closed up and locked up and so, and that works pretty well for the Utility Commission. That's the one that I am quite familiar with. So whether they're closing up the Anderson Recreation Center or closing up here, the process is pretty much the same, it's the same people.
Right, and I'd encourage just to point out, I think every one of the commissions is staff, so to speak. We have someone there, so they should be able to handle the close-up.
Okay, so Councilman Vega, what, do you want to make a motion for some action?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that with the exclusion of Library Commission, Youth Commission, Senior Commission, and leave the possibility open for the other commissions to make this their main meeting location as necessary when available.
With the airport.
I think we can go ahead and leave that the same with the airport, okay? We can say, hey, when available, I'd like them to try and come over here instead of, there's no negligible cost here, so why don't we try when available?
Okay.
And make that happen. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Unless Councilman Mosby has something to add to that?
So which ones, let me make it easier, which ones are we redirecting this direction? That would be the Beautification, Parks and you wanted Airport, you were saying? Public Safety is already...
Let me get back to my list.
Doing here when they can, I guess, right? So Public Safety is already relocated?
Excuse me, Councilmember Vega, I think I understand your motion. You're asking that all bodies excluding the Library Commission, the Youth Commission and the Senior Commission meet here at City Hall, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I need a second on that then.
I'm trying to make sure we didn't... Hold on, just going down my list.
Normally, without a second, it fails, but I'm sure I'm going to get a second on this, so I'm waiting.
Yeah, you got a second. I just want to count my things, yeah, I'll give him a second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 4-1. Okay, now, real briefly, I'd like to have two council members, or factually, I need three council members to agree with me. I'd like to rearrange the schedule again. We're going to bring item number, we'll place item number nine just prior to item number eight. So we'll hear item number seven in its order. So I'll need a second, a third, and, well, second, a third and a fourth.
I'll second you.
Okay?
Third.
And do I have another one to agree?
I'll agree.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Reimbursement Agreement of the Burton Ranch Development Project. And this is Mr. Arbo. I think it's Mr. Wilkie.
This should be a pretty simple item once I explain it. Back in about a year ago, the developers of Burton Ranch came to the council and gave a presentation on the concept of a community facilities district. They wanted it—they did that because they're interested in having a CFD for their Burton Ranch, and their interest is because Burton Ranch is actually made up of three different vesting maps jointly made into the project, and those three vesting maps are owned by six or seven different individuals or entities. And to facilitate their ability to build out the infrastructure for the project as a whole, the concept of a community facilities district is beneficial. The difficulty is, in developing that community facilities district, there's no single point of contact the city has with the project because there are multiple entities that are involved. This agreement, this reimbursement agreement facilitates that ability to have a single point of contact, so we're not dealing with six or seven different ownership entities and three different vesting maps. This action doesn't authorize or start—doesn't do anything with the community facilities district formation at all. It sets up the framework so that that process can go forward. One of the things that was requested of the developer team is to get a signed agreement to us, which happened on the 12th. The process of creating the CFD will entail creating documents, issuing bonds, and many things like that. For the purposes of making sure that the city is whole and the cost of that formation, there was also a $100,000 deposit that was placed with the city, and that also was received on the 12th. Craig Zimmerman is the managing partner of the Burton Ranch Development. He's here tonight to answer any kind of questions, but the takeaway from this is that this is the beginning of a framework for a process to create a CFD. It's not creating a CFD, it just allows us to have a working relationship with the developer team and having one point of contact. So I'm here to answer questions, if you have any, and Mr. Zimmerman is here as well, so you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkie? Mr. Zimmerman, I have a question for you, if you come up here. I'm assuming that this is a step forward that will help with the question I'm going to ask you. We've been waiting a long time for this development to get going, a long time. So do you have a timeframe, or can—will this help you maybe move it forward even quicker?
Mayor Lingle, council members, yes, this is definitely an important first step, and our hope is that this will accelerate us to the next steps. To be brief, creating—because there are three different owners, three different developers, the public infrastructure has to go in before any single developer can build. I'm with—the president of the Tobes Group, you know, we are ready to get going. If there were public streets in there and pads, we would start building, and so we've put up our deposit of $100,000, which will hopefully quickly get us to the city's bond council, underwriters, to begin the process of getting the bonds issued, and then we can start putting the public infrastructure in and get those homes up. But I do appreciate the question. This is a very important first step.
Okay, thank you. And then I do have one question for Mr. Wilkie. We talk a lot about—we talk a lot about building fees and everything else, impact fees. You know, this project will produce some impact fees for our city, for the development of the intersections, I believe H and Central?
I'm probably not the one to ask, but what I do know is that the—there are three vested maps, tentatively vested maps. They were all done at different times. The vesting allows that development to pay for the fees that were in place at the time that the vested map happened, so— The first one was vested in March of 2007, so whatever our impact fees were at 2007 are what they would be paying on their individual units, once the units are built. I believe there's a development agreement with them for some other additional fees, and I don't know if there's any kind of mitigation fees that are related to the H and Central, but there could possibly be. I just don't know the details of that.
Okay, and it was in 2008 that—I eight or nine that we—probably nine—that we waived a bunch of impact fees, so this was prior to the waiving of these impact fees?
I believe so. That one was 2007, one was in 2008, and the third was in 2016, so I think they're all outside that window.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the council? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment.
I'm in favor of this project. I've been in favor of it for a long time. I believe we need higher-end houses in the city. The other thing I think that we need to do is improve the pedestrian access to and from the city in that area. We need to work on how to connect the housing projects to the north, to the city, or bring the city to the housing projects to the north, but we need to do this. I've been out at La Presma Highlands since 2003, and I don't like seeing people walk to and from the city along that busy road. That is a very dangerous road. Fortunately, no one's been injured, but we've had a lot of car accidents out there, and it is—it's just a very—kind of a dangerous area for people to negotiate. The other thing I would like to do is—I would like to have this considered that no low-income housing be in the project. And you say, well, why would you do that? Because there's going to be in lieu of fees, and we need to concentrate some of the lower-income housing in some of the areas of the city so that people will not be stuck out there driving to and from. There is a lot of areas within the city that could—we could improve by having those fees build very nice residential units within the city, in the downtown area, around the downtown area. If you've ever been down to certain areas in Southern California, there's some beautiful low-income—some of them are not real low-income, but they're low-income, and they provide a very easy access to and from the commercial areas. Putting low income out there, I don't know. I know we have no low income in La Presma Highlands. They paid the in lieu of fee. The members voted not to have low income. That way, you didn't have that dense housing, small lots, and I think that the police department—
Could probably bear out.
They're not here tonight, but we have probably some of the lowest calls in terms of disturbances in the entire city. So when you have larger lots, it does help keep the peace. I've talked to Mrs. Zimmerman. I think that the—some suggestions about how to improve some of the pedestrian area out there could help. I don't know that they can do it, but he's taken a look at it. I like the project. I think it needs to go forward. We need housing bad. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Discussion, motion?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Third. Since moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, that passes 5-0. Congratulations, Mr. Zimmerman. Start building tomorrow. Okay, now, we're going to go on to item number nine, which is a city council direction of future action regarding proposed motorsports project. Ms. Breeze.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council. This evening, in front of you, to recommend to the council to receive and consider the status analysis of the proposed motorsports project at the Lompoc Airport. status analysis of the proposed motorsports project at the Lompoc Airport, to direct staff to process the application for the City of Lompoc land use approvals required for the project, which was deemed complete July 30th of 2015, and the final environmental impact report certified by city council on December 6th of 2016, with the Lompoc Parks Recreation Pool Foundation reimbursing the city for all costs regarding that processing. Or due to the closing of the performance period of the State of California grant as of December 30th, 2016, direct staff to return with the revised memorandum of understanding or lease agreement with the foundation to deal with the continued financing of the processing of the project, as well as the construction and operation of the project itself, or to provide alternative direction. We've provided in the staff report the background of the project from when the grant was actually agreed upon and issued, when the memorandum of understanding originally was signed, how we proceeded with developing our environmental document, and what we finally, at the end of December, the council was able to certify, we have submitted to the state for reimbursement on the project, received two payments. We do have a third payment request that's in to the state at this point. The FAA really has the authority over uses allowed at the airport, and the current airport land use plan that exists was funded by the FAA in 2011. There was no environmental work was done on that, so for the city, it is a draft document, but that is the document that the FAA identifies, and it locates uses that are allowed on the airport. Part of the process for this project to move forward would be FAA approval of a new airport layout plan. However, that is not moving forward at this time. The state, the FAA would also require that the NEPA environmental work be done on it, and the new plan be in agreement before the FAA will process their project and look at allowing a lease agreement between the city and the foundation. So because of difficulties with the design of the project and the landing area for Skydive Santa Barbara, we are currently not able to proceed with the project. And what we're asking is for the council to consider what they, how they would like us to proceed as staff. We have completed work that will be reimbursed by the state. That opportunity, that grant opportunity is now over. The performance period ended December 30th. So any funds, any work that is done in the future would be reimbursable by the foundation for a city time, for staff, for any processing that would necessarily be done on the project. There is a time for us to move ahead with the project. The way it is currently constructed, we would either, the options are listed in your staff report, that the foundation would need to withdraw the current application and reevaluate the design, and then resubmit to the city, or the city could process the application for the required land use entitlements, and take the project to a public hearing, deny without prejudice, and thereby allow the foundation time to reconsider the proposal. Or the council could direct staff to negotiate a revised MOU with the foundation for the financing of the continued processing of the application, or for the council to direct staff to negotiate a lease, the city property, with terms to deal with financing of the continued processing through the FAA process and the construction and operation of the project. So as I had noted previously, under the fiscal impact, it does explain the amounts that had been presented to the state and the refund that the city has received to date. But we are now out of the state grant period, and moving forward with any work, any future work would need to be reimbursable from the foundation. So we are requesting that you consider the information that's been provided, and provide direction regarding which option, if any, should be pursued. That completes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Ms. Breeze, when does the current MOU expire?
The MOU is, it doesn't really have an expiration date, it continues on through the process of, actually, it goes through the phases of the project for construction, but we're not hitting, because we're not hitting the actual, any future deadlines or specific requirements. We would need to amend it and put in new language.
So if the council were to take no action tonight, what happens if there is no expiration?
Well, we have to do something about the project, and so that's what we're asking. How do you, how would you like us to proceed with the completed project that we currently have in our process?
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
For my own clarity, Ms. Breeze, this reimbursement that we're waiting on the state is approved, we're just waiting on the check. We've got verbal or email confirmation that we did receive, or we're going to receive?
There were some questions, I believe Mr. Wilkie can answer that question better than I can.
Yeah, I've gotten an email back from the state parks saying there is in process.
Okay. That would lead me to my next question. So then, the Park and Pool Foundation is square with the city at that point, meaning they owe nothing, and there's no more billing or anything? That is, they're done, right?
Well, if, if nothing else is done on the project...
I mean up to date, so to speak, till this point.
I do not believe there's any further billings, because those billings were going through the, to the state, and that is part of what was presented.
I don't know if you, or Mr. Wilkie, or somebody at the foundation would know, but do we have money on file for them right now? I mean, do we actually hold any money for the foundation?
I believe Mr. Wilkie or Mr. Warren Miller would answer that.
Right, but we, well, we've got some work that's been done by, it's a little hard for us to answer that succinctly, only because there's been some work toward the ALP that's been done by consultants that hasn't been billed to us. So if we just took that off the table and just said, of what's been billed to us so far, then we would say, yeah, we are holding some money, because they've been making some payments toward the ALP, and we haven't been invoiced to that. Offsetting that is, there's a pretty minor amount that we'd heard from the state that has been disallowed, and a very minor amount, I think it was like fifteen dollars or something like that.
Something like that.
And then there's the question of some interest accumulation, I don't know that we ever got paid by, on the end.
Not that I'm aware of.
So there's some minor offsets to that, but yeah, right, as we stand from a cash standpoint right now, yeah, the city is not out of pocket as we speak.
Have we heard from the state regarding the twenty-five thousand, the addition of twenty-five thousand dollars for Meridian?
The amount was about twenty thousand, and the, the last I heard, they were still reviewing that. Our belief is that the work that was covered under that twenty thousand is consistent with the grant, you know, the type of work that the grant is eligible for, and that the state parks should pay for, and that's our case. So we're waiting for the final determination on that. You haven't heard any updated from last week, right?
How long has it been since we've requested that information?
Two months, maybe?
Well, we just sent the final, the final...
Oh, we sent, right, yeah, we just sent earlier, in, toward the end of December, right? Or was it beginning?
It was later in December, about the same time we sent the claim.
That we sent, that we sent the, for the reimbursement that would have included that charge.
And that is, the information you've heard from them, is that it's in, it's being processed?
They requested that claims, that that particular claim be segregated out from the claim for charges up to that. So the claim of the twenty-eight thousand is not related to that component? So the twenty-eight thousand has already been processed? So this item that we're talking about, the twenty thousand dollars, is pending their approval, so.
And it's been pending for...
It was submitted at the same time that the third one, third paid request was submitted.
Okay, so there's still some question on that amount, though?
And I'd like to follow up a little bit. The, the payment schedule that was agreed to, I believe, in the most recent amendment, included an estimate for what the cost share, the matching share of the grant would be. That was based on our estimates of cash disbursements and time, charges, back in probably the time that we set up the schedule. So we will, once we get the confirmation of that fourth payment, we can reconcile what was actually received for the match compared to what was actually paid in the match, and reconcile that. I'm saying that because there is probably a little bit more submitted, not counting the twenty thousand dollar items up in the air, but the match that we were, that we had to apply to the grant was a little bit more than what we estimated, a little less than what we estimated when the payment plan was set up.
Okay. Mr. Mosby, I'll get to you, just one quick question for city manager. At one point, you had indicated the city was not billing for your time. Have we changed? Are we billing for your time?
No.
And is there a reason for that?
I can answer that. My time, city manager's time, Teresa's time, are all part of the fifteen percent overhead component that they allow for as part of the match. So that time is being billed, but it's just a flat fifteen percent of the cost, so.
So regardless of how much time I'm putting into it?
Okay, thank you. Let's see, councilmember Mosby.
How much has the Motorsports Group paid in total?
I don't have that number, I don't know if Mr. Wilkie has it.
I don't have that in front of me, but it was about, I believe it was about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood. The last scheduled payment, I believe, was as of November 30th, so I believe I provided that in one of the weekly updates that was submitted since then. I just don't have it in front of me.
I mean, in total, total, ALP, NEPA, SEQA matching, I came by to talk, you weren't in your office, I did talk with the assistant city manager on Friday, and made a request that we have those numbers available, and I think it's an important number to see. And we're doing a, we're doing the, receiving, considering the status analysis of proposed motorsports project at Lompoc Airport, I think that's an important number that should have been in the report.
I apologize, I did not get that, that message about providing, bringing the cost in today, apologies for that.
They paid, you said, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand for something, or what?
I'm trying, I'm trying to picture the last report that I did, and I, I know that ALP is identified specifically in the MOU, and I believe the costs related to the expected matches in there as well. And those were satisfied by the last payment that was due by November 30th.
Mr. Wilkie, is the information available at your office? Like if we, you could, you could come back to us after public comment, give us that information?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Ms. Breeze or Brad, the process now here is to, we're being asked to possibly approve another MOU with direction to move forward to allow the motorsports to apply for another state parks grant. Is that kind of what I'm understanding here?
That, what we're asking is that you consider, the FAA will not approve the project the way it is currently drawn and designed. So if the motorsports park wants to move forward, they could withdraw the current application and work on another design. The city could process the application that we have currently and deny it without prejudice, which would thereby allow them to go ahead and prepare another design as well, and resubmit. That would be based on the existing environmental document that we have at this point. If they're going to bring back something that is different in order to accommodate the skydive operation, then that would be another, it'd be an amendment to their actual project that we have at this time, and we would have to look at it and evaluate it.
So at this time, there's nothing to move forward? We're basically, we basically could approve another MOU to buy them time to regroup and figure out what they want to do next, is that correct?
That would be the pleasure of the council, then that...
I got you, I got you, but if we, just moving ahead here, you know, to the state parks grant, I'm fast forwarding here, okay? In essence, if they were to apply for another state parks grant, we're again starting over, so to speak, as far as the financing part of it, with the city extending its own funds and awaiting reimbursement, is that what the, there's nothing that's changed there, has it?
Well, the city would have to apply for the grant...
Right.
Because we own the property, so in order for it to go through the state process, the city has to be the applicant for development.
So there wasn't any other process that was available to, from the city for, so you could get out of this reimbursement part of it, or is that the way it is? Is that, was that the only option that we always had?
I'm sorry, for damn sure.
The extension of monies, you know, is my concern, because on the fiscal side, we're very fortunate to have been reimbursed, in my opinion, okay? I mean, it was, we're very fortunate. So I know that there's a lot of people out there with, prior, were not very happy about that, but we're in a good spot right now, yes.
Well, to answer your question, I was going to say, the original agreement that we had, the original draft of the MOU did not call for the city being out of pocket to be reimbursed. That came about as, as the fundraising for the project progressed, and the pressing deadline to start up, the work was, was upon us to still be able to qualify for the state grant. Therefore, we came, because it's a reimbursed grant as opposed to a gift where they give you money, you go spend it, this is a reimbursement, we were, we were just out of, out of options, we were at a point where for the project to move forward and make itself available to have the benefits of the grant, the city was going to have to go out of pocket, and that's what was under the revised MOU. Going forward, this will, again, I assume, I'm, that if we're talking about the possibility of reapplying for another grant cycle, that if it's the same rules set up and it's reimbursement, that at that point, we'd have to figure out, is the city going to be out of pocket again, or is it a matter where the foundation is doing all the fundraising, so whatever cash costs there are? cash costs there are, are being carried by the foundation, and then the reimbursements can come in and go back to them? Or is it cash out by the city and the reimbursement's coming back by the city? That's one of the reasons that if we were going to move forward, we'd need another revised MOU, because that is an issue right now that's not contemplated in the current MOU.
I have one more question, kind of fast forward, it's going to be Joe. As we move forward and we look ahead and say this thing was to start over again and we re-ramp and we're back in the same situation, extending funds and asking for reimbursement, in light of some news that there could be litigation or possibly liability in the future, it's my understanding that the city's still tied to this, to the foundation, even though it's been said that the foundation's responsible for anything that moves forward, but since it's, it's a city grant, it seems to me it'd be hard to disconnect if there was a lawsuit or liability. I was wondering if you had an answer to that?
With regard to the issue of a lawsuit, if you mean a lawsuit challenging either the EIR that was certified or the project if were ever approved, the city would definitely be named in that lawsuit. The, the foundation is, under the current MOU, is supposed to provide defense costs for that. And under the amendment that was, the most recent amendment, if they don't pay those costs, the city can just choose to not defend the case. So there's some flexibility, if you want to use that word, some ability for the city to not have to pursue that litigation unless they get, or defend that litigation unless they get the money from the foundation. If that litigation is started and the city doesn't defend it, which would mean then the plaintiff would win, I'm sure the plaintiff would seek attorney's fees, and the city would be liable for those attorney fees, but again, the foundation is supposed to reimburse the city for those attorney fees as well.
So the city could still be on the hook for these?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, anything else from the council? Okay, we're open this up for, thank you, Ms. Breeze. We're going to open this up for public comment. And again, please come forward, make a line over here on the, my right, your left, so we can move forward.
Good evening. My name is Janet Blevins. I have lived in Lompoc for 30 years. First off, I want to thank the council and the staff and everybody else who's here tonight doing a really good job and working hard. I appreciate it very much. And I feel like in 2017, it's more important than ever for all of us to be appreciative of each other and, and kinder than we've ever been before. So that's what I'm trying to be. But as far as the motorsports park is concerned, I think it's kind of ironic to have it, a refurbishing of the idea on the, the agenda tonight along with the plan for almost 700 new homes in very close proximity to where this motorsports park would be if it does move forward. We have already identified over 2,000 residences that are within earshot, I guess I would say. And there were lots of us who disagreed with the finding on the EIR about the noise testing and so forth. So it just seems to me that we have sort of dodged a bullet. We have been paid back for all of the money that was spent. No damages have been done. The FAA is not going to approve the plan. It is impossible to find 77 acres of riparian area in the river, in the riverbed that would have to be provided in order to proceed. That's one of the environmental concerns. I just think that this is a really good time for the city to say, not, not now, it's not the right place. The project is okay. Having a motorsports park within the city limits is, is not an acceptable plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Chris Starling. I just wanted to point out that there were two studies, two, that allowed people to come forward and hear that there is no audible sound from the motorsports park. I wish we could just put that fake news to bed. It doesn't exist. The second thing I want to bring up is, someone here said last time when we had this discussion, that all this stuff was old and motorsports parks are outdated and they go back to the 50s and all this other stuff. I think it's important to point out, and certainly a lot of people here are aware of it, in the time slot on Monday night between 9:00 and 10:00, there's a little old cable channel running a program that's beating ABC, NBC, CBS, Fox, and all of them. Maybe that program is street outlaws. It's the most popular program on TV in that time slot. Huge, huge. So please, can we also stop this other disinformation? Now, I wish we would roll forward with this project, and here's why. We have a city that needs money. They want, the city wants, a new fire station for 8 million, new police station, all these things. And I would propose, since we're not going to build any houses in the city, we need to get some revenue in here to cover these projects. And this would be an excellent way to do it. I have a list here of 48 motor parks in just the state of California. They're very popular. They make lots of money. And guess what? You'd have all that money to spend on your little pet projects. So I don't see why this can't move forward. So what I would hope is that the city council will move forward tonight, get this car back in gear, get it back on the track, get it up to the blocks, and let's get it rolling. There's been a lot of stalling on the part of faceless, nameless people involved here, which really bothers me. We have a ton of petitions that have been signed. We have hundreds of people that are showing up every time this thing happens. And I think that without moving forward, we're going against the will of the people. So thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, sir.
Paul Hornberger, city resident, property owner, business owner. I'd hope you guys consider letting us continue on with this project. We get new obstacles, seems every six months thrown at us to building this project, and we can continue going at it and moving forward with all the obstacles. There's a couple new obstacles, and we've, would like to proceed with this. You go to the end of the town on Saturday morning, Sunday morning, and you'll see vehicles leaving with motorcycles. Families going to other parts of the county, Kern County, San Luis County, Ventura County, families, parents, children, to ride motorcycles in other locations. I've did that with my children. They're great kids. They're in their 20s. They're working. It's a great opportunity. It's family for motorsports. When I was in school, we were allowed to ride motorcycles where the baseball diamonds are. It was an off-road park. I've been here for 53 years of my life, except for the six years I was in the military, and I chose to come back here because this is a great community. It has a lot of things to offer for a lot of people, and this would be another thing to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Ruth McKenna. I just want to start out saying good evening to Mr. Lingle and city council and at all. I really hope that city council, motorsports, David Hughes, and the FAA can all work together and get these issues resolved soon. As to how much space David Hughes will end up having for his skydivers, motorsports is willing to give him the space necessary, so let's find a resolution to this. I would, I would be really sad to see if we don't go forth with this project, due to the fact that we have come so far on this project, and all I hear from people is that there's not enough activities for people to do in Lompoc. This would be a huge mistake on your part if this did not happen. Yes, there are lots of sports offered to Lompoc, but not a lot of activities for people to just come and go when they choose. When motorsports did their own sound study, there was no complaints. Since we, motorsports, has put out thousands of dollars towards the NEPA and SEQA study, it would be a great help if the foundation is hopefully willing and able to come forward, or some sort of entity that would be able to pay the city back. Please, put your hearts in the right place, and let's all work together and see this project go forth. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Good evening, John Lynn, Lompoc resident, chairman of the Parks Foundation. First, I want to disclose that the mayor had ex parte input on this agenda item when he actively participated in a staff meeting with the foundation representatives on Wednesday, January 11th. I'm sorry if the rest of you from the council weren't able to attend. The MOU from the city states that the foundation, the city, will work cooperatively to process the project. Every staff document describes the foundation as the applicant. The MOU and its amendments describe how the project will proceed. With this in mind, you can imagine how surprised the foundation team was to learn on January 14th that there would be a presentation to council by staff on next steps for the project when the foundation had not been asked for input. Happily, the staff scheduled a meeting for Wednesday, the 11th, and we were able to share our plan to move the project forward. Unfortunately, none of that information was presented to the, in the staff report that you have before you tonight. Only the mayor had any knowledge of our proposal, so all the other council members and the public have not had the same information that the mayor learned at last week's meeting. As the applicant, we asked for 15 minutes on the agenda tonight. In response to our request, Patrick said the mayor would not allow us that time. The common practice of the city is the applicant is given a reasonable period of time after the staff report to make a presentation, provide clarification, and answer council questions. I personally attended over 200 city council meetings and shared about 100, and never seen it done any other way. With $176,634 paid to the city, the foundation wants to be treated like any other applicant. Yes, we paid in $176,000 with the last payment in December. Our last speaker will provide the council with some, a proposal on how we believe the project can move forward. As we discuss the technical process of moving the project forward, the most important thing to remember is why we're doing this in the first place. This park will provide diverse recreational opportunities for the youth of Lompoc. That's why we started. It wasn't to, to engage in anything other than that. It's one of many foundation projects that resolve that age-old question, what is there to do in Lompoc? With regard to a couple earlier comments, the FAA has not made a final decision, and our, our legal counsel feels that that can be resolved. And with regard to the city advancing funds, State Park does make available grant advances, which the city chose not to take advantage of, and our next speaker will cover the next
Good evening, staff, councilmen, residents of Lompoc. I'd like to do an overview of the project funding and how's it's changed over the years. We were just talking about that. When the project began, Rincon consultants suggested that this project's environmental work would be somewhere in the range of $70,000, with the foundation paying about $35,000 due to the grant covering half. By October 8th of 2015, the letter from the city estimated the grant match for SEQA from the foundation would suddenly be $174,555. After several long council meetings and clarifications from the state, the grant match for the SEQA work was determined by staff to be $64,652, of which $55,695 was already on deposit with the city. Next, the city added more staff time. The NEPA cost was added by the FAA, and the cost for the airport layout plan, which was not covered by the grant, was also added by the FAA. The $64,000 cost for SEQA with the new cost had increased the foundation's match amount to $176,634 in two months' time, in June of 2016. Although the mayor and councilman Homsdahl said the foundation could not raise the funds, the other three councilmen had faith in the community, and we appreciate that, and voted for the MOU amendment to allow time for the fundraising. On December 7th, 7th of this past year, the foundation made the final payment, $12,552. Of that $176,000 on deposit with the city, that has been spent or committed to spend about $115,000 to date. That means the city still has foundation funds of over $60,000 for any current costs. With the SEQA completed, the foundation will resume fundraising for the next step in the process of building the motocross tracks. This will be made easier, once again, because the OHV State Parks has a substantial more funding available, and with the certified EIR document, the Lompoc project will receive higher scores in the competitive grant process. The handout that we just gave the council are two charts showing how the OHV funds are generated and spent. It's been stated that this is tax dollars, and it's a waste of tax money. The reality is, the chart shows that 99.4% of the fund is generated by OHV users. It's not tax dollars. It's people that are using the motocross tracks and off-road parks generates the money. Additionally, since 1972, the state general fund has borrowed tens of millions of dollars from the OHV trust fund and not repaid it.
Mr. Creel, you'll have to wrap it up right now.
Thank you.
I'm Will Skyler. I've lived here 77 years. I'm vice chair of the motorsports group. How important is history? Schools feels pretty important. I think it's a required class. There are people that studied history and have PhDs in history. Well, how do you get history? If there's no news today, there's no history tomorrow. What's the history of the motorsports? My earliest recollection of motorsports in Lompoc was there was a flagpole in the center of town. The base of it is at the museum now. And on 4th of July, you'd line up with the cars, and you'd run out to surf, go around Soda Lake, and some of the cars would then come back to Lompoc. The other ones would come back, go through the Sloan Ranch, come out the head of Magalito Canyon, and come back down Magalito Canyon. And those cars took two people. They had to have a mechanic to go with you there because they generally broke down trying to do the race. Lompoc was a ranch and farming community originally. That brought cowboys, that brought steer wrestling, those type of things. So pretty soon, we had a arena on the outside of Lompoc there. They had bull riding, bronc riding, calf roping, barrel racing, and general good time. Then automobiles started getting popular, and somebody said we should have a racetrack. So they took and built a track around the arena up on the rodeo grounds. And that was the start of the Model T races. That was started by a group here, the Lompoc T Club, and I think there are two members- And I think there are two members today that are still alive. One of the cars that was used in that is in the Spanish House Museum along with Mr. Brigelli. And of course, we all know days where the people in Crestview Terrace live, that's you're on top of my racetrack out there. Of course, motorcycle racing was very popular, too, with a nice track out at the Campbell Ranch and several there. Okay, now we move up to after World War II. A lot of our people went, served their country. They saw their buddies get killed and stuff, and they come back and says, "I want a little more out of life than what I had when I left." A lot of them had learned to live in the woods and found great joy in going in the outdoors. And that led to a lot of hot rods, which were cars that basically were souped up with various ways of doing it. And I'm going to run way out of time on this. Anyway, let me do my cleaning, please. Okay, the Motorsports Committee investigated the funding, prepared a primary grant, and looked into several sites and proceeded with the project. The state stated they would not allow the motorsports to have the grant, so we went to the landlord, which was the city. The city provides a time schedule for us all to go by and put the grant in their name. Well, it didn't happen, and we've lost the grant. So, that's kind of what happened there. Up on the hill, there's 473 homes in the Burton Mesa Project and 42 homes in the other project. I don't know where 700 or 800 homes come from out of that. And there was a check to the city a few days ago for $49.07. I believe that satisfied the interest payment that we were overdue on one of those payments. I urge you to... We feel that there's still great interest in our project, and we encourage you to help us make tomorrow's history by making your decision for us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's David Sipelman, resident since 1990. I'd like to talk a little bit about the economic impact of the project. Some of our statistics have been questioned as simply estimates. Those same types of estimates are being used for the proposed sports park next to Hancock College and many other conceptual projects in Lompoc and across the nation. Our basic business plan was developed by Track Planning Associates, an industry professional with decades of experience. The plan was developed at the request of the city council at a cost of $10,000. As the design of the motocross portion of the park was completed, the business plan was updated to reflect the use of the various tracks described as a previous speaker. We were fortunate to have statistics from Motocross Racing Series that operated at the Fairpark in Santa Maria for a number of years. In developing the enhanced business plan, we also received information from other tracks in Southern California and racers that are on the track circuit. For go-karts, the Northern California Association and local kart racers are very helpful for us. With all of this input, the design of the motocross tracks evolved from three tracks in the first phase plan to nine in the plan submitted to the city for review. With these different types of riding tracks, use of the park will dramatically increase. With the expanded track use, the park will employ at least six full-time and 25 part-time workers. By the third year, the park users are projected to fill all vacant weekend rooms in Lompoc and hotels and motels, which will increase employment. Restaurants will also see substantial additional weekend business creating new jobs. The mud bogs that we held here for seven years in the past filled every hotel and motel room in Lompoc and overflowed to Boulton and Santa Maria. Every motocross event has five to 10 times the number of racers as a mud bog event. With higher hotel occupancy, the city will see more bed tax revenue, and Lompoc will have increased promotional dollars to spend. The airport will see about $20,000 a year in land use revenues from currently vacant parcels adjacent to the airport. This is a praise contracted by the city and paid for by the foundation. These funds will be used for airport improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Robert Dunlap, Lompoc resident, council. Why are we building motocross tracks? Part of this vision was Lompoc Foundation wanted to enhance and create new recreational opportunities in the valley. There's many generations here that use the standard line. There's nothing to do in Lompoc. I don't know if that's... Nothing is the exact word, but there's not as much as a lot of other cities. We've lost a lot of things. Bowling alley, roller skating, riding in the riverbed. That was part of this city at one point. I didn't live here then, but I came up from Santa Barbara to do it as a kid. Over the last few years that I've been in the foundation, other things, other parks have been opened. The Barkin Park, the radio-controlled racetrack, the Riverbend Bike Skills Park, all great things. And they were tough to get through the planning, the procedural hoops, let's say. It was a tough deal, but they made it. So now, here we are with the motocross track. There's quite a few. It's actually nine different tracks that are part of the motocross portion. That's what I know the most about. That's what I do. There's a beginner track with instruction. I am an instructor for small kids, have been for many years. By the way, I've been doing this for, I hate to even say it, 50 years. I've been riding a motorcycle. There'll be a trail ride area. There'll be a rhythm track. An enduro cross and trials track, which is very slow but very technical. The main motocross track will be designed by a professional. There are track design people that we've contacted, and it will be done by that. There'll also be a stadium cross track, which is for only skilled riders, and you have to be ranked to go onto those kind of tracks. You're either a pro motocrosser or, in my type of racing, you're an expert level rider. And you don't buy that. You earn it. And it takes a long time. So, I would like to see this continue forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, please.
Mayor, committee meetings, John Johnson, committee member. The state OHV grants yesterday and today. The state grant was applied by the city to be a joint venture for the foundation described in the MOU. The city administrator commented at one meeting he would not let $1 million be lost. I'd like to just note that this is a city project. This is a foundation project. This is for the people, for the kids. Circumstances change. Over $759,000 with the grant expired in December. The city submitted grant reimbursement requests over $253,000, according to the staff report, which would be the match from the foundation funds on the deposit of the city of over $83,000. Although the majority of the funds were lost when the first expired, there's an opportunity to get all those funds back. And when we reapply for the funds, we could get, with the way the state is for 2017, we'll be able to get employees and more than the money that we've already had to reject or that we were passed expired on the grant. We also are available for equipment for the park. Was omitted from the first application because of a $1 million limit. State Parks has encouraged the foundation to gain partner with the city by providing a match and apply this grant cycle. Like the last time the city applied the last grant, the cycle was more money available than the usual. So, we've been this before. It'll be easy to go into 2017, February, and apply for more money. Like this last time, although it is the competitive process, the CEQA complement would be complete, and the kids moto fund park operating in the city will have a competitive source in the process. And I've said this many times before, there's many people out there that will donate. You know, I don't want to say a million dollars, but I got a couple people to donate a couple hundred thousand dollars once this project gets going, along with the people that are building the houses up on the top. As with the last grant, the foundation will provide the cash match for some portions of the grant and the grant match in materials and labor used in the last grant application. So, there will be city funds for the grant match for the staff. Tonight, we asked the council to instruct the staff to apply for the grant with the assistance of the foundation and providing documentation. Project opponents have said that some of the grant dollars are tax dollars. Most of the money, the money that's from the state is OHV licenses, green stickers, red stickers, and even California motorcycle licenses. The grant dollars are... 99% of the grant dollars are paid by the OHV users. In addition, the state general fund borrowed tens of millions of dollars that we haven't got back yet. So, please, keep this project going. It will happen, and it'll be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, or good evening, I guess now. My name's Steve Bridge, resident of Lompoc, 30-plus years. Today, we're asking our leaders for help for our kids. At last Wednesday's meeting, the foundation asked the staff to present the plan to move the motocross tracks forward to the council. We're hopeful today that the council will direct the staff to the following items, and I've included it here for you to be passed out. We'd like you to prepare and direct the staff to prepare an application, working jointly with the foundation, for the OHV division grant due March 6th, 2017. If the description on the agenda prevents that, then perhaps we can begin preparing the grant application and return to the next council meeting to codify it. We'd like them to, direct them to negotiate in good faith with the foundation amendments to the MOU reflecting the new timeframes and other terms that may have to be changed. We'd like you to direct the staff to work cooperatively with the foundation to resolve any issues relating to FAA and their approval, and for the lease or other documents for use of the land. Four, we'd like to obtain revised quotes for the NEPA and ALP work without the compressed timeline, because that added significant cost. Five, stop all work on the NEPA and CEQA until the results of the grant process are known on July 6th, and then when the final grants are awarded. In closing, I want to ask the council to remember that much, if not all, of the opposition of this plan was focused on the auto racing. While some in the community may still have that dream, I think it's important for the council and the community to be pragmatic. The motocross park is an opportunity to achieve a fabulous place for our kids. Some of us, maybe even some on the council, remember when our kids with joy went to the river. Now, it's too environmentally fragile to allow this. This plan will bring back some of that capability to our community and for our kids. Let's not lose this chance to use the recently completed EIR as a path to obtaining a fundable, exciting place for our kids. Something we can work towards as a community. Something all of us can support. A safe, exciting place for our kids and their kids to enjoy for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Hi, council. My name is Tyler Enticnap. I'm a professional supercross, motocross rider. I grew up in Vanderburgh Village, just kind of right on the outskirts by the Providence. I started riding around when I was three. I, you know, rode Devil's Ditch, Trail Road right around there. There used to be a riding area. And now, there's just, you know, houses and basketball courts, and that's cool and all. But, you know, if it wasn't for that little riding area outside my house, I probably, you know, wouldn't be a professional motocrosser today. The, you know, little riding is, you know, might not seem much to you guys, but there's a lot of kids and a lot of families in Lompoc that I know of, like, at least, you know, 40 to 50 people each weekend drive at least an hour, two hours, outside of Lompoc to go ride their dirt bikes where they can. And I have a track, you know, on Highway 246 that I let all my friends kind of come and ride. And there's a huge community of motorcycles and ATVs and UTVs out there. I think if we just open this motorcycle park in the next few years, we'd be, you know, phenomenal that you'll see a good revenue to come to Lompoc, a good range of people. And I think it's just nothing but positives, honestly. I mean, there's always a chance of, you know, people getting hurt, but, you know, you could get, you know, blow ACL out over at Beatty Park on a basketball court. So, you know, there's always one way or the other. It's just kind of whatever you guys think. But I think it's a huge positive for the motorcycle park to come in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Adam Enticnap. I am also a professional supercross racer. Just like my brother, I've been riding since I was three years old. And now, I'm on Fox Sports One every Saturday night. Without riding dirt bikes, you know, it's, like you said, you know, you do get hurt. But in school, they taught you how to have discipline, how to have goals. But riding my dirt bike, I learned how to have discipline and how to have goals. So many families, if it wasn't for my mom and dad and my brother going on weekend trips, we wouldn't have that time together. And those are the best memories I've ever had in my whole entire life, and they're something that I'll never forget. And we could bring that to Lompoc. You know, another big thing that I have is with John Johnson is that, you know, I have a huge following, and that's just on dirt bikes. And we're talking from 70,000 to 100,000 people that are just the motorcycle community that I am completely willing to bring here to Lompoc to advertise, to say, "We have a track in Lompoc." I'll make showings there, whatever we need to do to make it successful. I know we need more revenue. And I know we need more places and more things to do in Lompoc. And I really think that this motocross track could be a great thing for Lompoc to have. Yes, yes, it could be noisy, but there's always fixes for that. You know, there's inserts that can go on pipes that can bring these decibels down huge amounts. They make XRs right out of the box. Not everybody has to have this super loud dirt bike. It doesn't have to be like a motorcycle on the road where you need to be heard to not get hit by a car. Like I said, memories with your family. There's a lot of people in Lompoc. There's a lot of people that I know that have dirt bikes in that garage that sit there. And, you know, the last point that I want to bring up is that my family was lucky enough to have money. The reason that I am a professional supercross and motocross rider is because I rode at other places down south, and they had the money to take me here, take me there. If I didn't have that, I wouldn't be a professional supercross racer, rider. Having that in Lompoc could give a kid an opportunity to be a professional, to have a good time, to be with their family. You know, I'm not saying that every single person is going to become a professional athlete and has that dedication, but every single person is willing to have fun. And born and raised in Lompoc, and I'd love to see it happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Adam Enticnap, senior. Those are both my boys that I'm really proud of in the way they speak. You know, I moved to Lompoc 35 years ago, moving from Santa Barbara, and everybody's like, "Lompoc? Armpit of Lompoc." I moved up here so I could ride dirt bikes. We could get away from it. But then I saw the drugs here. And I mean drugs that you guys are responsible for and everybody in this crowd knows about. And my kids have never touched alcohol, never touched drugs, ever. And they will never do it, ever. So, you know, to me, it's a responsibility of this council to get that money back. If I've been in business for 35 years, it's to learn about the passion of all these people that you're not using, and you guys aren't utilizing the money right? I mean, I don't know what you guys want to bring to town, but me and John could run an Adeleno Grand Prix and bring 5,000 people to this town in one weekend. It's up to you guys. That flag right there, you guys... That flag right there, you guys are responsible. I run my business and run my family tight, and it's not like me and my boys haven't had problems before. And I've been in this town for like 30 years and seen the same group of people asking for an OHV park. And now Tobes wants to have houses over here, and you, did you guys say that he could have the houses?
Yep.
You did?
Mm-hmm.
Because we had an OHV park down there where we used to have the mud thing, and you let Frederick do the houses, and then we lost our park. Do you guys remember that? My kids train kids all the time. They want to come over, they want to set examples. We want to set an example for your community, but if you don't give us a chance, we can't do it. And I get really frustrated with government and liability. Have you looked into the city of Porterville? They have a track that's an OHV track that's been there forever, and we have races on it. We qualify for Loretta Lynn's in Nashville, Tennessee, where we get our gear for free. We get tires for free. We get money for free. That's what the city of Lompoke should be thinking. $750,000 grant that you guys came to town and you guys missed it? Really? I'm ashamed of you guys. I work on my kids and my business. You guys take care of this town. I've seen it for way too long.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Brandon Matzie. I'm a Lompoke resident 30 years or so. Kind of happy to be following the last few people that I was because they're kind of inspiration for especially this project. I've got a couple of kids of my own, which I believe all you guys have kids, if not grandkids, and hopefully you've introduced them to some sort of motorsports throughout their lives, probably enjoyed it somewhat at least. This opportunity that you could give the city and the children the future of Lompoke and, I mean, our great country, the future is what we're looking at, and our kids are our future. Not us right now, we're eventually going to die just like everybody else, but our kids are the future. You give the something, something local, something that people can afford, and you realize Lompoke's on a budget, we're all on a budget. If we want something, we got to try. That's what I've been preaching to my kids the whole time. If you really want something, you need to push for it. So the harder we push for it, the harder, the harder it is, or the easier it is for us to attain. Please try hard and work this out. All these are little stepping stones, everything that we've been running into are little stepping stones. It can be avoided, everything can be resolved. Just takes a little bit of talking and figuring it out. Push for our kids, push for our future, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Dwayne Homdahl, resident of Lompoke for 71 years. Everybody wants to know how long they lived here and what have they done when they've been here. I've heard some excellent comments and some comments that always got some concerns and ever since this project came forward. The interesting thing I've always come up with is why do we have to go to the river to go ahead and have this sports park? Well, because the city owns the property. I never seen these same people go outside of the community, outside of the city limits, and find a place to put this motorsports park where you didn't have housing, you didn't have other things. And there are some places if they went and looked, but county of Santa Barbara's hard to do business with. The concern I see with the city itself and everything that we talked about, the money and everybody's coming in here, is do you have the money to go ahead and allocate? They're thinking about upwards of $700,000 on the next set of EIR. What it's going to cost you, may you get the money back, you may not get the money back, you may not get it, but you also, it's a dollars and cents issue. And I think you got to look at that if you're going to put, endorse that. You know, everybody talks about everything coming in. I think there's going to be a lot of people come in, yes. I don't see anything. But I never heard anybody talk about SpaceX. And look what they're going to come in for the launches they've got coming down the road. That is going to bring in, and whenever they have a launch, they bring in at least 1,000-plus people coming in. You got a new hotel that's going to be bringing people in, you got a wine industry that's bringing them in, you got also beer facility coming, and that's going to bring those people in here. Now, are they all going to mix or not? But like I said, I think you got to look at that, and you're trying to put your money and what you're going to do with it and how it's going to go. I think to have a racetrack is a good idea, but I think it's location, location, location. And we already have some people already selling their homes thinking they're not going to be able to get a chance and put up with the noise. And I think that's what, as a council, you're going to have to think about, what's going to be the after effects of this sign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Mayor, council, I just am pleading with you, this has divided our city like you wouldn't believe, the whole community. And the sad thing is, is you've got one faction over here that's against the other faction. If they actually checked it out, they'd see most of our names on that and see that we've donated to their project, but never were we told it was going to be in the middle of the city. Who does that? It's just, I think somebody needs to make the unhappy decision of saying, "Yes, we're going to do this," or "No, we're not." I've got homeowners that have been sitting on the fence for years, ready to sell. I keep telling them, "Wait, wait, it's not going forward yet." And they're trying to decide, their, their whole life's on hold because they're moving out if this proceeds. And then you've got these other people that are trying to put together a project that everybody in the community thinks, "Yes, it would be great," but who puts a racetrack in the middle of the city? And then, in addition to that, you're talking about this, this being turned over to the city later? I mean, if it's such a great project that's going to generate so much money, someone would be able to do it privately. And would they talk about taking and qualifying for racist? This isn't even a regulation racetrack. Put it outside the city, get it regulation so it truly can make money and truly can bring in a lot of racers. And, and I actually am from a motocross family, and the term that was always used in my house was, "People make better traction than mud." Remember that one? So I'm not sure about wanting the city to be, have liability for something like that. It's just crazy. I'm totally in favor of having something for the kids, doing something, something like this, but not in the middle of the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Anne Rouget, Lompoke. I've been a resident, I'm probably considered a newcomer for 21 years, so I'm not from 70 years been here, but we've watched it develop. I've been on city council, as you all know. I'm getting weary of this, I'm sure you are too. This is, we're going into our sixth year of this project, and these comments, and they're the same. I commend the people that are passionate to want to have this. I understand that, I understand passion a lot. But it, I agree with the lady ahead of me, it's not the right place. And for the city to get involved in this, and this goes back six years, was a big mistake. And I know Councilman Vegas said, "We dodged the bullet this time." What about next time? What about in the next six years? And we go through this whole thing again. We all get up and we say the same things over and over, and you sit there and you hear it, you listen, and then you make the same decisions. You know, never change your decisions on this. So it's, it's very frustrating for all of us. I think it's time to stop this project now and have the proponents find another place to put it. I, I think it's a good idea, and I understand it's exciting and, and young people like to do that. I had three, have three sons. I would never let them motocross, I'm sorry. It scares me. But I think it is in the wrong place. I just really do, and I don't think the city should be involved anymore, anymore. And I've said this before to you, that it is your job as representatives of the city to make sure we remain fiscally healthy, and this is not the way to do it. Because we're going to go through this same, I call it a game, of you owe us money and we wait for the money, and then does the money come, does the money not? And then you apply for a grant from the state, which is our money, being a homeowner and a property owner, and pay taxes. So I, I just, I think it's time to put this to rest and let the horse get buried.
Thank you. Next, please.
Yes, I'm Justin Rouget, 23 years here at Lompoke, and I listened to the comments of various people who are supporting this racetrack, and the thing which misses totally is it's right in the middle of town. What is wrong with that idea? We stand out there in front of our house, and 300 feet away will be this racetrack, right out there along with Walmart and all of the development in Lompoke that we plan to have. Who is going to want to support that? Who is going to want to put developments in our area? Our property values are going to be impacted tremendously by a racetrack right in the middle of town. Now, the state ended the financing because they saw that this project was being very badly run by the proponents, and they found out where they were talking about putting this project. It was not appropriate. That's why the money for, that they were offering for racing areas was removed and ended. It is not the place to put it, right in the middle of town. And if you go out there and look at it, you can't deny that fact. It's just no place for this kind of an event in Lompoke. And I think what we ought to do is stop wasting our time here as a city council and as city managers on this project and end it, end it, and move on with the important things like is our, like our safety center. That's what we really need to think about, our new fire station. We're going to have something like 400 new homes built, expensive homes, built right in the city of Lompoke. We need a safety center, a new one, an advanced one, to support that development. You heard Tobes here tonight? They're getting ready, yes, and so some at homes. And we need this kind of development, but those people are going to say, "What in heaven's name is wrong with you people? Put something as dismal and terrible as a racetrack right in the middle of your town." So please, stop it now. Now's the time to stop it and end this. You, you can go to this, to the state and ask for money, but you know what? All of us are going to fight that tooth and nail. And with our representatives in development and, and the representatives, we're going to fight that tooth and nail. We're not going to allow that to happen. And what you can stop is tonight and end the spending and support what's really important in this town, and that's our home developments and safety. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
My name is Ronald Moes, 30 years, Lompoke. I'm so tired of this. When is this going to end? Okay? We let this thing run its gamut. I watched the city council, give them chance after chance after chance after chance amendment, what, three, four times the MOU was, was modified? They haven't kept one promise, they haven't done, made one bench line, other than raising the money. I commend them for that, but other than that, they don't have the infrastructure to build this. I used to write federal and state grants, Department of Justice. You need a very sophisticated and attentive organization to manage a grant. And when they applied for it, I was shocked that the state gave them to them. But then when I started digging into the relationships between Mr. Sixo Fernandez and some of our city council members, it all made sense. Well, I'm tired of this, and I really didn't want to have to say this, but I'll see you in court. I've got a house a mile from this abomination. I'm going to hear it, I'm going to smell it, I'm going to have to deal with the traffic. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of, of jacking around with this thing. We'll see you in court. And you know what? There's a whole bunch of people behind me that would be more than willing to step in line and put the money up to do it. So I hope this group of people has the money to fight a lawsuit because that EIR was a farce. It was a joke. Five hours in the course of a day in Lompoke? I live on that hill. I know what noises are up there. I hear them. Please, spare me. And your second test, I can't believe that the EIR even allowed these people to assist in the performance of this EIR. That in and itself is a conflict. I would love to be a judge to sit in and hear that one, how a group that is advocating this was allowed to participate in the actual sound study. Cars that they said that they were going to race. Who's going to police this? We don't know. Enough is enough. If you continue to do this, there will be ramifications politically for those people who are going to be coming up for reelection next year. I can guarantee it because we have two people sitting up there that a group of people got together and advocated because they are going to make the better decisions for this city, more so than what I've seen from three city council members. And I'm done. I'll see you in court and I'll see the foundation in court. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was a very compassionate speech. Thank you, Mr. Moes. My name is Terry Hammonds. Well, back to the subject of the, the staff report that you have tonight. I did a little work today, and I contacted the FAA. You're, you're not going to go anywhere with this. You say, "Well, why?" You, you, you have to have the NEPA. You have to have the airport layout plan. You have to have that. And then there's one more thing, and people have mentioned this, but it's not provable, is the viability of the project at the airport. It has never been proven to be viable, never. Yes, they gave you a business plan, but within that business plan, three of the motorsports parks, one of them closed, two others, well, one closed and one reopened, and another one was sold for less than the market value. I, I don't understand how any person in their right mind could have put, could have picked a worse place to put a motorsports park. You put it in a riverbed. It's really silly. You put it in a riverbed, you put it on an airport, so you have not only three government agencies you got to go through, but then you got to deal with all the citizens that are going to complain about it. Bad idea, terrible idea. I spoke to you, I believe, that on December the 6th about Pomona. There's no doubt about it. Drag, drag racing is a very exciting sport, but it's got to be done right. You can't cheapen it like we're going to do with this. I mean, International Hot Rod Association, they don't even have any tracks out here. How are you going to compete with National Hot Rod Association? What's Bakersfield and HRA? All of those, all those tracks, this is a dumb brainer. Another thing, let's just correct the funding to OHV, its fees from parks, licensing vehicle fees, and gas taxes. They break it down like that, and the state assigns or gives to OHV a certain amount of what they approximate to be the gas, gas tax. Some, there was, used to be a survey, and I, I don't know exactly how that all broke out, but it was not a very good study. This is, this should be the end of it.
You need to wrap it up. Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Joyce Howard-Tan, Lompoke. Enough is enough is enough. This has gone on for so long. You know, you're in a position of leadership, and some people may think that's great, you know, gee, being an elected official, but it's a really difficult position because oftentimes you have to go against friends or family members in your decisions, and it's not easy. But you have the responsibility to look at the betterment for the whole entire community. You're responsible for the reputation of this community, and I can tell you, we're on very thin ice. on very thin ice. You know, the city has a lot of real issues to deal with. And yet, we have spent, many of us in this room, years dealing with this project. The state pulled money back from this project, $700,000, because they determined that it wasn't going anywhere. The arrogance to think that you would go back to that same state and ask for yet another grant is just, it's, there's no reality there. I mean, you, you five people have to be realistic because none of us can be. We all have our opinions. We all know what you should do, what we want you to do, but it's really up to you to take a step back and look. In all the years that I've been coming to these hearings on the motorsport project, I maybe heard one, maybe two people say, I don't like racing, I'm against it, or whatever. What I have heard the majority of people say consistently is it's a bad location. It needs to be in a different location. I've personally worked on environmental issues for about 40, 45 years, and I can tell you, and you can take this to the bank, there is no way this project will go forward in this location. So I would encourage the, the foundation to admit that this isn't going to work there and look for a location where it can work because it will never go in, in that location. From an environmental standpoint, it is a total disaster. So I don't envy you your decisions, but I think it's time for you to step up and make one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Quick question, city manager. A comment was made by one of the speakers that the city is responsible for losing the grant money. Is there any truth to that? Have we done anything to lose any of that grant money?
Not, not to my knowledge. I, as, as best I can piece together, but I defer to maybe other people to have other opinions or descriptions of what happened, is originally, I believe, the foundation's intent was to have the city not be out of pocket at all, and that they were going to cash flow fund the work being done and then have a reimbursement come. So after the agreement was signed in 2000, March of 2014, the, the process start needed to really get triggered at some point. And it had, there was quite a bit of time before any initial steps were taken. Ultimately, the, the works, the real work started once there was an amendment done that changed the manner in which the cash flow would work and had the city fronting that money. From that time on, we definitely, we as a team have been very involved in propelling the project forward as the city council had directed. I personally have put more time into this project than any other single activity that I'm involved in. So, no, I, it, there were a number of, in, in defense of both the foundation and city staff, there were a number of things we encountered along the way that none of us had anticipated that became roadblocks and hurdles that we had to try to figure out how we're going to go over, around, under, or through. And a lot of that was related to the, the federal side and federal aspects of this, which meant there was more expense involved, expense that, that hadn't been contemplated by anyone. And, you know, just recognizing that once the FAA, for instance, was weighing in as to what its expectations and requirements were, it really expanded quite a bit of the scope of work. And it was just, it was no longer possible that everything was going to get delivered within the original timeframe. All of these were, were inputs into that. But no, I think we've been working on overdrive, trying to deliver, help deliver the project as best we can.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Starbuck.
Well, a couple of points that I want to make. I mean, environmentals, obviously. People that have lived here for many years can probably recall up in the village when there was a roundy round track there. It was later converted to a motocross track. It was donated by Union Oil '76 to something, and now it's become a five-wire fence that we're not allowed to go for ecological reasons. There was Model T racing at Surf, Stewart Grade, Beckwith ponds. There were mud bogs, river bend soccer fields. We have an EIR for motocross track there and equestrian stables. It's become illegal to ride in the river now. We tolerate farming in the city, but we are afraid of a muffled motorcycle. I want to know the idiot that put an airport in the middle of Lompoc. I, I just, you know, the arguments are counter. Sitting back at this, I, I have to look and say, what is best for the airport? These are the people that are going to be affected the most. I see a retraction on the motorsports committee. This has been about motocross. This has not been about drag strip. It's a phased project. I mean, the trial riding, the motocross. I, I, I can support this. I, I don't think it will interfere with the airport operations. I, I don't think that skydive, I, I think that there's going to be a moderation that will happen here. One thing that it has done is it has established a value. That worthless piece of dirt, 40 acres of sand, it's an old abandoned quarry, crane yard, Santa Barbara County flood control mine is now all of a sudden become valuable property again for, you know? Understanding that the foundation has got a lot of work to do. If they want to pay, they, they're going to have to pay for the NEPA and the airport layout plan. The city can't finance it. The state grant won't. So I mean, the ball is back in their court again. I, I think that once that was, that is done, the airport gains benefit. They have an up-to-date layout plan, the NEPA's done. Anything that could happen beyond that is, is good for the airport. The foundation will need to come up with the funds to reapply for the grant if they are willing to do so. You know, just remembering that if this project is redesigned and it does go forward, that the motocross part is going to be paid for. It will be taken care of with the green sticker money that we refer to. Drag strip and everything outside of that realm is not. It's a separate entity. I'm very concerned with the ability to pull the mitigations. There, in its current phase, the mitigations look overwhelming. I don't know. That could be a show killer there. And one of the other things I think that would behoove the city, us to look at, would be, much like with the bike skills park, there should be some type of a deposit that the motorsports group will put down and say, you know what? If this project abandons, we disband. At least the city will have the mitigation to go in there and remove it. And, I, I mean, I just can't see the continual, hey, we're looking at a very downscaled project here in its current form, and I, I, I think that it's not a bad thing for this city.
Thank you. Councilman Vega.
You know, I applaud the motorsports group for all the work they've done and all the money they've raised. I still, you know, us being elected officials, I still have to ask these questions about liability. We may not get to, to a point where anything's going to happen as Councilman Starbuck has described, just based on litigation. Again, Mr. Panoni stated, hey, city is on the hook. How much money does the foundation have for litigation, or will this kill them right off the bat? I know you guys have worked really hard to come up with the money as you guys have had, but along with mitigation, we may not even get to that point if some legal, legal challenges come up. So, and to be fiscally responsible, you know, we, we've extended ourselves, and I get it, with the grant funds and all that, but we're playing with other people's money plus ourselves, and we have to, we have to be fiscally responsible here. I don't think, you know, with $400,000 or $300,000 that was expended out there, that lost to the city, and I would have to refer to the city manager and the city attorney to tell us what possible impact a loss of that kind of money and, and you guys out there, what you guys would think about it if we went and lost that money, based on a reimbursement. So my question again, I'm not sure if Mr. Panoni, there's a question there as far as, maybe you could reaffirm the question that was already asked previously, and also Mr. Wyman Miller. Again, the impact is not a free space.
First, excuse me. First to respond to your comment and reiterate, I, I again acknowledge that if a lawsuit is filed, both the city and the foundation would likely be named as parties. If the foundation hasn't paid the city's costs, although they're supposed to under the MOU, the city would have to pay that money upfront. And if the foundation doesn't have the money to pay back, then the city won't ever see that money. It will be a liability to the city. In addition, if the plaintiffs are successful in their lawsuit, then the city would likely have attorney's fees to pay to that plaintiff. And one thing that I think, I think you received a copy of it, but I will make sure that I comment on it because you've mentioned legal action. The Lompoc Valley Community Coalition has filed, as of today, we received a letter that's a requirement as a first step if someone's going to sue on a sequodocument, on the EIR that was certified. So we've received today a notice of intent to sue. So it's, it's almost certain that this body, the Lompoc Valley Community Coalition, plans on suing, so there is going to be legal action that the city will have to defend.
And, and I did receive a copy of that, and that's why I asked the question. So the legal challenges are there. Is any of the, are any of the legal costs reimbursable through this state grant?
No, not through the state.
That's what I thought. Got you. And Mr. Wyman Miller, I'm not sure if you wanted to comment, what possible impact, you know, the losses of money in the future? Like I said, I did say we're very fortunate to have been reimbursed to this point, but maybe you could give us an example.
Well, one of the, I've, I've been accused of being overly dramatic about financial impacts before, so I'm a little shy to give the example, but it's the only way I, I know how to express it in, in terms people can relate with and understand. Ultimately, you know, we, we tried to shape and form our, our general fund dollars at least, which tend to be our most precious dollars, to help cover the core services of what a city provides, you know, public safety, police, fire, for, for streets, for planning, and for, for parks and recreation. And eventually, if we have losses of these types, they, they eventually have, have, are going to come out of the pot of money that come to fund those sources. At times, we talk in terms of, well, how many police officers does that buy? Again, not to be overly dramatic and try to get everybody feeling sensitive about police, but the truth of the matter is, a lot of times, you try to cover your bases across services to get to where you've got adequate amount to, to cover everything. And then if you do have anything left over, you're trying to beef up the police force. So generally, at a cost of around, to keep a police officer active, around $100,000 of police, you know, per police officer. So if we're going to put it into that marketable term, anytime we have a potential of a loss, whether it's this or anything else, not to focus on motorsports necessarily in this regard, but anytime we have money exposure, we're, we're looking in terms of police officers, and that's, that's about where we, we, we put that because we're, if we're, like I said, if we have extra available, that tends to be the first place we're, we're beefing up.
Mr. Panoni.
Did that answer?
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you. Okay, thanks so much. I didn't mean to cut you off. Mr. Panoni, on a lawsuit such as this, which could be open-ended, in your experience, something with the threat of a lawsuit for that purpose, objecting to the EIR or the certification, is there a potential cost that you could probably estimate that it could go from what to what to mitigate that?
I would say that the city's costs could be, just at the trial stage, could be $50,000 to $100,000. If it went on appeal, maybe another $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. And if that's the fee that you're paying, your attorney, which would be, I'm assuming, my firm, because we have low rates, because we're, we represent public entities, typically the private plaintiffs in those kinds of cases usually charge two or three times what we charge, so there's a likelihood of another $200,000 to $300,000 that if you were to lose, and I'm suggesting you would lose, the city would lose, but if you were to lose, there'd be that attorney's fees potential as well.
So the total money is that the motorsports has raised so far to pay for staff time and fees and reports and everything, potentially, that amount plus more could be lost to litigation? If, if it was available, okay?
The money that the foundation.
The motorsports project has paid, according to them, about $176,000.
Right.
Okay? I'm just kind of like using as a reference, all that money that they've raised so far.
That's already been used.
It's been used, but I'm saying potentially in the future, it could be, it could exceed the amount they've already paid for litigation.
Yes.
In the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Rosberg.
I've heard a lot of demands tonight about government responsibility. And I have to say to the foundation that the only reason your three years of grant had any success was due to government responsibility because once we got involved and managed that grant forward, it actually came to fruition for having a certified EIR despite it being flawed. So two and a half years prior to the draft EIR being presented, presented on the June 24, 2016, nothing had been done. So you had three years. And so, asking for government responsibility, I'm sorry, you need to put it back on your management with your foundation because you had two and a half years before the city moved it forward for you. That loss of the 700K was for dragging your own feet. The idea that you want us to be applicants again for another grant, again, government responsibility. At this point, the best thing for you would for you to find a piece of private property that is not near a riverbed and not have a government entity involved and apply for that grant again yourself. Because my job is to protect our community for everyone, and putting a dangerous and polluting activity of any sort on any city property for any reason goes against my best judgment for my community. So you knew where I stood before the election. The election forced this topic. There were so many more important topics we needed to address and so many more things our city staff need to be focusing their time and money on. I cannot support moving this forward. I cannot support it being on city property, and I cannot support another application for a grant.
Okay, a couple of comments here. First of all, I want to compliment and tell Councilman Vega how I appreciate his vision and his courage several months ago, when you courageously, against a lot of people's wishes, you changed your vote. However, after he changed his vote, I want to tell you a conversation that Councilman Vega and I had. We were in this little room after we took a break, and I says, Victor, why'd you do that? And he says, Bob. He says, I want the opportunity. At that time, we were invested about $120,000. I want the opportunity for us to get that $120,000 back. Victor, that took courage to change your vote. I want to congratulate on you that because we have got our money back. You did the right thing. You said we were fortunate to get it back, and I agree, we were fortunate to get it back. We're talking about liability, it could be, again, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Councilman Mosby, I want to. Councilmember Mosby, I want to remind you of a conversation you and I had. We're in the council office, and I said, Jim, what do you see in this project? Do you, it's, do you see it ever moving forward? And he says, no, Bob, he says, I'm, I'm continually voting for it, I'm going to let it implode upon itself. I don't know if you remember that conversation. Well, it has imploded, so you've, you know, you've, you're, you're right in what you're Councilmember Starbuck, I admire you for your dedication and looking after taxpayers' concerns. Now, several people have said this isn't taxpayers' money, but it is taxpayers' money. The taxpayers have spent about 300,000 dollars on this project, and they have nothing to see for it. So I want to congratulate you on looking after and taking care of the taxpayers out there, not just with this project, every project we talk about. You are, your, your heart is in looking after the community, the taxpayers. So would we want to move forward with this? Would we want to apply for another grant? I want to remind you of the group of people, the foundation, that we'd be dealing with again. This is a group of people that, at the first sign of any possible failure of this project, they canceled, stopped payment on a 10,000 dollar check that belonged to the city. That money was the city money, they stopped payment on it. The reason they gave us was, well, we may not, we may need that money for our attorneys, so they're going to use our money to pay for their attorneys. They stood at that podium right there and admitted that they intentionally withheld a payment to us, because we were not doing our job. You just heard the city manager, you, those of you that have been involved in this project for six years now or less, realize that we have done, the city has done everything that has been required of us to move this project forward. I've often been critical of our city manager. It's no surprise that I'm not in favor of this project, and I've been critical of our city manager. Patrick, why are you doing this? Why are you doing this? You know it's a bad project. His answer to me is, because I'm being directed by the city council. That's his job. He does what the city council tells him to do. He doesn't, I don't know if he's in favor of the project, against the project, or he doesn't care, but he was doing his job. So congratulations, Mr. Wyman Miller, for doing, doing your job. Just briefly, Councilmember Osborne mentioned it, this project unfortunately became the main focus of the most recent campaign, or elections. Several people have said, the majority of the people want this project, we have petitions signed, the majority of the people. Well, I think the majority of the people have spoken about this project. Councilmember Osborne, who was against this project during her campaign, received more votes than any other council, council candidate in recent history, I believe, in the history of the city. Congratulations to you. The people have spoken. We have, I don't know how many people spoke today in favor of it, and just like Councilmember Vega, I congratulate you on your dedication, the work that you've put in, your hard work, your time, your sweat, and I'm sure a lot of your own money. But the people of Lompoc, which we all worked for, have spoken. It was brought up, I brought it up during my campaign, because I was hearing from people about their concern for the property values. I was criticized for using the term realtor, so I will not use the term realtor tonight. But we did have a, a real estate professional, hopefully I can use that term, real estate professional speak to us today. She has clients that are on the fence, should I sell, should I not sell? They are afraid of this project. You've heard people, one person say that he's going to, he may even be a part of this group that's given us an intention to sell. He's concerned about his property values. So don't listen to what I said during the campaign, where I said property values may be affected, listen to people that are actually in the, in the profession. Property values are being affected by this. So I'm going to be opposed to us doing anything moving forward. I do not want us to apply for another grant. Councilmember Vega, you said we're very fortunate to get out of it, and I agree with you, we're very fortunate to, to get out of it. Even though it has not been clear, I've tried to point it out, we have not received, despite what everyone says, we have not received everything that is due from the state. There's still money pending, there's still some money that's in, not, I'm not going to say in dispute, but they're reviewing it. The majority of the money has been received, and I congratulate the foundation on that. Councilmember Mosby.
Let me fill in a few blanks, Mr. Mayor, I think you forgot a few things. One of the reasons why they stopped payment on it is they didn't feel there was action, and they wanted to get the attention of the city manager. Wasn't necessarily the right thing to do when they stopped payment on a 10,000 dollar check? No, but they did get the city manager's attention, and the city manager got their attention, and things got fixed. And yes, I did say they were imploding on themselves, but they did rectify it. And what I was asking you to do is not make this a political issue, and not to enhance the fear mongering that was going on, and the false statements that you were using, and pictures that you were using. So I did ask you to do that, held up your little door hanger that you're putting out there, and I went down the list of things that I felt weren't appropriate. This group has worked its butt off, six-plus years, thousands of hours of time they've sacrificed. They've been led around and, 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 under the understanding they could do this project. And, I don't know, did you get the numbers, Mr. Wilkie, how much?
Yes, with one caveat, that the MOU amendment allowed for the application of the 4,275 dollars that was paid by the foundation directly to Meridian to be counted as payments to us. So with that number, I show, and it was reported on the November 1st, 2016, staff report of 180,334 dollars and 87 cents, added to that, the 49 dollars in '07, which, there's no reason why my staff would have told me about that, but I have no reason to believe that it wasn't paid. So the total would be 180, 383 and 94 cents. So the number that was provided by the foundation, I believe, the difference is probably the 4275 and maybe a couple other payments, so.
And, you know, I, I do have to commend, and I do have faith in you guys, and when I brought this forward back in May and tried to move forward with the MOU, it's because I did have faith that you guys could design, you could come up with the money and do it. I know the mayor didn't have faith, and he actually said it at that meeting, and 180,000 dollars, to come up with that kind of money in that timeframe on a potential, a potential to do something. And, yeah, I was involved in the, in the foundation and overseeing what the motorsports group was doing way back when, and a level, the, the degree of the, the time delay was putting the design of the project together and getting the grant. The grant came a little fast, and the, and the guys worked their tail off, and in August, September, after a DRB meeting, I think they had 17 pages of items that they had to complete. And they did go and put plan sets together, multiple plan sets, nine or 10 reviews, I think they did, they spent nine months putting the plans together so they can complete the filing process, which isn't an easy deal, even for paid contractors are taken four months. So the group did well as volunteers to getting stuff together. It's not a simple process, any of it is, even with somebody who's fully funded, it's not a simple process. I, I have talked before, and I know it's not on the list, but I have talked before about, and I found the EIR, the seven or eight-page EIR on the old motorsports track, and unfortunately, I don't know if we can open that back up, it sure be nice, I mean, the EIR was there, you know, and it was an operational facility, and it was closed due to an accident. But it's amazing what you could have done just 20 years ago, and how the, the bug and bunny counters have kind of taken control of things. But again, as Councilmember Starbuck, shame on an airport being middle of the town and staying on somebody trying to put a, a potentially noisy activity where? In an airport. That if you happen to listen, and, and, and listen all the time, you can hear those airplanes, and they buzz around, they buzz around, they buzz, not just at the airport, but they're over the whole town. So there is a noisy activity in town, but a lot of people have grown, grown accustomed to it, and you kind of numb out that airplane that goes around and, you know, I believe in this group, and I believe they can pull it off. I believe the, the grant cycle, I think the city manager did hit upon it, it was timed out. They had three years to come up and, and get project done, and three years, I don't know how long Walmart expansion took, but it took them a long time to get there, and they got plenty of money behind them. I know the prison expansion tried to happen, and I think people yelled up and down and said it was going to devalue property values, so prison expansion didn't go through. And I brought up in the past that we didn't get a highway bypass because smog was going to be an issue, and, well, a four-lane highway coming to town was going to devalue property values, and I think I put that article up on the overhead one time. Likewise, too, the Central Avenue extension wasn't going to come through because that would devalue property values, and having a four-lane highway go to the 101 through Beulton, well, that would be a bad thing, and there'd be too many people coming to town. So you got to be careful, some of the people are bragging about the potentials of success. There are people who don't want success. There are people who don't want this to happen, whatever form it might be, whether it's a prison expansion. Walmart fought it hard. Walmart came in with a bank of lawyers, and that's how Walmart got their expansion in. It's, it's really sad that it had to come to this level, it's really sad that a lot of, of really half-truths that were eluded here, a lot of false statements were made, that, this, a lot, a number of them are the same ones from 1969 forwards, the same things, smog, increase, devalue my property, a lot of hypotheticals. I believe a project can, can be built at that place, I believe the city of Lompoc would qualify for more grant funds, and anything that we do in this town, even people walking down a sidewalk, there's always the fear of somebody going to sue us. Do we stop putting sidewalks in? Do we stop putting traffic lights in because of a traffic light, and a lot of accidents haven't stop signs on traffic lights? Stop putting all of those in? And we can be fearful, and we should all just stay in our house, and not go outside, because if you go outside, there might be an accident, somebody might sue the city. Stop driving the streets. And I just think it's just really, really sad that we've stooped to this level on a project that could be completely viable for the community, and, and, you know, knowing a lot of the people in the group here, how hard they've worked in understanding that they can design this project and put together, remember, these are volunteers, that, Mr. Mayor, that you lost faith in, that came up with 183,000 dollars and made their payments. Did they have a few hiccups? Yeah, they did. With this counter out here, we remember our council receivable on utilities, we had over 2.2 million dollars that was aged out to seven years out of money that we were scrambling to get. So a lot of people have difficulties, but this group pulled it off, they made it, and I think the last couple of months, they were real close to be on time, they had 12,500 they were coming through. That's a chunk of money. That's a chunk of money to come up. So I think there is the ability to do something and design something, maybe it's not 110% of what they want. I believe the skydiver can work together. I think arbitration, I wrote a bunch of pages at a, at a meeting that we had, I would have liked to have been noticed about that other meeting, that, for some reason, I didn't get the, I got the memo, I got told when I wasn't supposed to be in a meeting, the group one they have, but nobody told, reminded me that they were having one, I would have liked to know, and I would have made it there, but I took 11 pages of notes and, and at one time-
Can I, can I interrupt you one second? Could I get a motion to extend the-
I was going to move, extend the meeting a half hour.
Okay, it's been moved, do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Mosby, go ahead, continue.
And if I could ask the, the city manager, did, did we ever come to that level, the FAA moving towards arbitration with the skydiver?
No, they, they did give us a pronouncement on that. Yeah, the FAA did.
Okay, and they said we can't move him to the east 200 feet?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is, is there any way that we can get an agreement like this, work with the motorsports park, a little two-sentence one, says they can use the lower bench for, for riding motorcycles?
As long as it doesn't conflict with any aeronautic activity, then yeah. I wouldn't suggest, I, I wouldn't, I myself wouldn't have recommended something that abbreviated, and I wouldn't recommend that now, but regardless of its length, could you get something where you grant use? Yes, you, you can, we, we have the ability to grant the use of the motorsports activity for airport property. It's ultimately going to have to get blessed by the FAA. My understanding is it will be blessed by the FAA, as long as that non-aeronautic activity does not interfere with any existing aeronautic activity.
And I was, been 110% of that, you know, contrary to what people said, I have not wanted to displace this skydiver, he's, and I, I said that to his face a number of times, fortunately, he said other things to me that I can't repeat here, but I don't, I don't see why we can't, we have a document that says there's, there's minor issues involved. We always have this threat of litigation, whatever we do, and I would, I would like to see that we move forward with, with one of the options and bring back for future council for moving forward with filing for off-highway vehicle grant funding, and work, work out a lease agreement and a new MOU to, for the group.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to reject staff recommendation, and if necessary, we can come back with a second motion for further direction, but right now, I made, the motion is to reject, reject staff recommendation, and I'll need a second on that.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay, staff, do you need further direction?
I would reiterate, we're, we're at a point of practical impasse for, I, I guess I would need to consult with the foundation to understand more completely where, where that leaves us, because, for instance, I don't know, absent going after the, the, you know, reapplying and, and getting new grant dollars award, whether that is critical to their ultimate ability to fund the project or, or not.
So do you want to come back at a future meeting with?
If I may-
Yes.
Another option would be, if the council wanted to either give direction, for us to seek the grant or to not seek the grant. So a motion could be to seek it, or a motion could be to direct us not to seek the grant.
I think in, by rejecting it, my motion was to not seek the grant.
That's not what your motion said. Your motion said to not take any of the staff recommendations, the staff recommendations didn't deal with the grant.
Didn't address that.
Okay, so I'll make another motion to re, to not seek a grant, and with that, I need a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 3-2. Okay. Come on.
So, to, to finish the response to your question, yeah, at, at this point, we're at a functional, functional stopping point, I'd probably want to meet with the foundation and find out if they have any other ideas on how they'd like to proceed if there's any more work, or are we in agreement that right now we're at a, a suspension point?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you all. We are now going to move on to, I guess we're going back to item number eight. Item number eight is Amendment of Consulting Service Agreement. This is- This is Mr. Luther.
Good evening, council, Honorable Mayor.
Why don't you just wait a few minutes, Mike? Okay, if I can get everyone that does not want to attend item number eight to vacate the council chambers and try and do it quietly. Okay.
Good evening, Mike Luther, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer. Tonight I'm here before you to request your approval for an amendment to the consultant service agreement number CS 14-T1, which has to do with the transit maintenance, transit operations and maintenance facility on D Street for value design engineering services not to exceed $80,760 and for the approval resolution number 6D-93, print 17, approving supplemental appropriations. The last time the project was before council was on March 17th, 2015. At that time, staff presented the results of the relocation analysis. Council selected the site study three, which was the combined transit operations and fleet maintenance facility, as a preferred option for the development and directed staff to prepare development plans, conduct environmental studies, obtain planning commission approval, and advertise the project for construction. Staff has been diligently working towards achieving those directives. However, it has not been smooth sailing and we have encountered some issues with obtaining the additional property that's required from level three. And due to delays, we're now encountering cost escalations for construction above what was previously provided to council back in March of 2015. So in June of 2016, our project architect made his first substantial submittal, that's our 50% planned submittal in construction drawings. At that time, he also submitted a estimate of anticipated construction costs, which exceeded the total project construction estimated costs of $13 million that was presented back in March 17th of 2015. So at that time, staff understands that it's important to stay within budgets, so we began working to develop ways to deliver the project, the key functions that are necessary for the transit and the fleet maintenance to occupy the site and provide options during bidding so that we could have some flexibility to build a smaller project that still provided the essential needs of the facility, but also provided options for future expansion or to possibly award additional additive bid items, assuming that bids came in below the estimate. So that's the value engineering process that's described in the staff report. So in addition, staff has also been working on the project, we've also been working to secure additional funding sources. To date, we've secured another $232,047 in additional Prop 1B funding, and that's above and beyond the previously reported 2.3 million allocation to the city. Basically concludes my staff report, I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Luther, I tell you, one of the things I remember years ago when this project started and was agreed upon by the past council at that point, and I think it is a way for you to achieve your funding, is we were going to sell the corner property, but it keeps showing up as a future development and future growth area. And we can ring the bell on this because there was a winery that was interested, it shows it now as blank, but that was part of the original thing that we had agreed upon.
So back in, I went and reviewed the video back from when we originally entered Estro for the YRic property, that's when this came up. So at that time, that was before the needs analysis was completed. So I do agree that it was talked about at that meeting, that that site would be the first piece of property that would be made available if it wasn't needed for lease or and/or selling for future. So this is the current, the current plan as we have it right now, this is what we're working on. So as you can see, the corner lot is not developed, it's, we're not touching it, we are fencing the corner and providing frontage improvements for sidewalk, curb gutter, and landscaping to make it look pretty, but it's not, it's not being developed. So it still could be council's preference to research that for sale. I wouldn't recommend doing that until we build our current project, but it is...
I mean, it's just, it's a piece of prime real estate and part of the whole incubator effect of the Sabani Industrial was to start a winery and then hopefully they would move, and they are moving down, it's ironically down Chestnut. So this would be a prime piece of real estate and right across the street is another winery. I mean, it was discussed when the acquisition was, we were discussing properties, it's been on the table the whole time and I just don't want it to get forgotten. I mean, it is a revenue source to fund this project forward.
And we've tried to incorporate that into the design, as you can see, that we're not building on the corner. When site study three was brought back, it showed the project being built off of the corner, but it did show the potential for future expansion, which it's, it's still there, it's still available for future expansion, or if council desires, lease it out for another purpose or sell it. We'd just like to point out, though, that the funds that were used to buy this property are transit funds, so if it was sold, it goes back to transit, yes.
And that's what we're doing right now, we're asking for more money for transit funds, so it's a logical move.
Well, we're asking for additional design funds so that we can make sure that we can deliver. I mean, if I, if I, if we bid the whole project the way it sits and the bids come in outside of budget, then we have nothing to build. If we do some reworking right now, we can produce plans and documents to be able to deliver a project and also have the potential, assuming that bids do come in where they're estimating, that we'd still have additional projects available in the future that are designed and that we can build when additional transit funds become available later.
Any other questions for Mr. Luther? Councilmember Mosby.
We're building a noisy transit center in the middle of town? Just a joke.
Okay, any serious questions from Mr. Luther? Okay, public comment. Okay, seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion and/or I will entertain a motion. Seeing no one push the button, I will, I will make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is it just one through three or did you want to do number four as well?
One, two, three. Seeing...
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Phone asleep here, Bob.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, that concludes the agenda, we are going to move on to written communications.
Nothing more than you versus.
Okay, oral communications, as you're out last time, would you speak to us for up to two minutes?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I think this evening, your fire chief made it very clear that fuel loading is a very critical item. I've been in front of you now multiple times requesting that you do something about the illegal dumpers that are causing the fire loading on properties against the law. It's, you were given examples of the potential of loss of life. I would surely hope that one of you will put it on the agenda to make some type of policy that will penalize the individuals that are doing this now that it's been identified by your fire chief as a significant issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, actually, or someone, we do have, this is a violation of our city code to illegally dump, is that correct?
It would be, I mean, it is. I believe perhaps what Mr. Gonzalez is referring to is that absent having, you know, being able to identify and prosecute, if you will, whoever the offender is, whoever's causing the action, then city of Lompoc, like many other cities, then puts the onus, the responsibility on the property owner, so sort of like if you're the victim property owner of the dumping, you also become now the party responsible for the cleanup. And I think specifically that that's probably the angle that he's looking at is not only reiterating and maybe wants us to step up our policing of that, but as you heard from the chief's testimony earlier, we aren't currently poised to have those sorts of resources around a lot. We certainly would go after if we knew we had illegal dumpers, but maybe it's a matter of, well, do you want to shift the cost from the property owner to city's general fund? Is that something that...
So if one of us makes a recommendation to ask you to bring something back, you could bring something back for us to discuss?
Yeah, if that's the angle, I'd just like some understanding of what approach you'd like to have, like would you want to look at how other cities handle that, you know, how, you know, are we doing it like everybody or is there something, are there programs out there we can go ask and look around about then? Yeah, we can bring that part forward. I'd just like to understand what it is exactly you'd like...
Just wanted to stop.
...brought forward other than an education of what our rules or process are.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close oral communication, bring it back to council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
No reports at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Rosborn.
I just want to let the public know that Econ Alliance in partnership with United Way is having their WALI informational session here in Lompoc next Thursday at 7:30 a.m. You can go to W A L I Lompoc Forum dot Eventrite dot com and register for it. It is a worker education program that has been going really strong and has had some really interesting results and they're coming to our community to share the impact they're having on it.
Okay, Councilmember Mosby.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports, but I'd like to talk about the one and a half water rate. I'd made this request before and it was approved and Mr. Wilkie had said, you know, let's wait until we do the rate analysis on that. Well, I'm looking at it in a different perspective since then, Mr. Wilkie, and I'm thinking really the only people that are affected by this would be us ourselves, because technically I think we're paying one and a half times the rate for our water that we use at River Park out there unless we're using our own well, a few people outside of the city limits, and then as I mentioned before, the cemetery. And what I'd like to do is go ahead and just do a quick, we should be able to in-house do a cost of service on this. It's not that big of a deal and I would like to look at Frick Springs again, the possibility of turning that over to Lafco and let that become some kind of a water district up in the canyon rather than it costing us over 100,000 a year to operate it. You know, I don't think we're under any legal obligation to lose the money to operate Frick Springs. So if we could move that ahead, that way it won't interfere when we do do the rate study.
Okay, and I think that's already a council request, so do we, I don't think we need a second or third on that. Is that correct, Mr. Wyman?
I think what Mr., I think Mr. Starbuck is asking for an amendment to that because originally we were going to bring it forward, the other...
With the rate review.
I think he's asking that we expedite a cost study of the out-of-city service costs for water customers.
Yeah, you know, I mean, in a serious side, I don't want to pay a consultant to do this little bit of work, you know, that I think that we should be able to accomplish in-house. I think that we can make amends to this and Frick Springs has been in the back of my head since we received that report a while back. I just, the thought of losing that much money to provide that low a service, it's a spot zone, you know, we own it. It's just something that I think we might be able to take other action on, turn it over to Lafco and let the water users of Frick Springs become their own district or something.
I think on the front end of your statements, I think we can accommodate that because we can isolate what our costs and divide it out over whatever we're delivering and come up with what we understand our cost of service to be.
I do have that presentation from a few years ago, so I can save staff a lot of time on that.
Okay, on the back end of that, it's not a, it's not a matter of us turning over to Lafco. Lafco deems who the, who the servicing authority is going to be.
Right.
We could make some requests that we'd love to get rid of it, but it's kind of ours until...
It's easy, we don't pay the property taxes, let them take it.
All right.
Okay, do we need a second and a third on this or is it just continuation of, you have...
Yeah, yeah, what's currently approved was for us to bring it back with the fee study. So I think what he's asking for is this piece, this element of it to be done in-house and to bring it back sooner.
So I'll need a second and a third on that.
Just one point on that, if you could, because from what I understand, we do one and a half times rate for water, one and a half times rate for sewer, and two times rate for solid waste, if it's outside the city limits. I think those were done through resolutions in the past in... You're ready, you're ready to fill me in on something there, Isaiah?
No, I'm just waiting to get a clarification because...
If those could be piggybacked because they're kind of similar and I'm just asking Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, that's why I'm just not sure, but I don't mind taking, taking an initial look at that. I'm just not sure, for instance, arriving at the cost of service for out-of-city solid waste, how that, how, that might be easier and it might be harder than the others, I'm not sure, but if you'd like to look at all of them, we certainly...
If I could piggyback on Councilmember Starbuck's, I think it's important because it is our park at River Park, I think that's the biggest payer for, I don't know if we're charging ourselves, I think technically we're supposed to in the park, but I don't know if we're doing that, I don't, but anyhow, that's just, if he was going to talk about one, might as well fire another two, I was thinking.
I would think if we were keeping it clean from a 218 standpoint, we would be paying ourselves, if you will, we would be paying from non-enterprise funds to the enterprise fund the appropriate time and a half.
I think it's two times for solid waste, but I don't know if, anyhow, if this could piggyback on his for discussion, need him to modify his council request.
I mean, if it wouldn't be that much extra work, I would, you know, might as well look at it.
Mr. Wilkie, feel comfortable, you and I can sit down and take an initial look and see, I'm, I'm just not sure, if we have the new accounting system, this would be so clean. I just, what I don't know is how isolated the costs are, how do we accumulate?
Yeah, I can't think of how to do that right now, so...
So, tell you what, if you wouldn't mind, we will take, we'll make a yeoman's attempt at it. I think some of it honestly is going to have to do with how knowledgeable the individual enterprises, water, sewer, and solid waste are, as to like, how much time do we spend? How many trips do we make up, whatever like that? Then we'd be able to come up with a cost and divide it out over number of accounts and usage and volume and be able to figure out what...
You're referring to Frick Springs, though, on that or are you...
I thought you were talking about all out-of-city, the whole time and a half rate.
You were talking about trips that we make and all that.
Right, well, and so I don't know, like, when they're working, when they fill out a worksheet at the end of the day of what they've done, I don't know how detail, I just, I'm pleading ignorance and I'll need to find out. I don't know how detailed it is to isolating what work they're doing in the city from what work they're doing outside of the city. I just, I don't, I don't know how fine tuned we are.
Okay, we don't have a third yet, but if we get a third, we need clarification from the city clerk because she's confused.
Is it a cost analysis of outside customers for water?
I'd say it's an internal cost study of what the out-of- I'd say it's an internal cost study of what the out-of-service costs are to deliver services for water, sewer, and solid waste. Yeah, I'm sorry, out-of-city, yes. Thank you, it's getting late.
Okay, we have a second, we still need a third, or it fails. Okay. Anything else, Councilmember Starbuck?
No.
Okay, I have nothing to report, and I know it is awful late, and probably no one other than my friend in Kansas City is still watching, but if anyone happens to be watching on, let's see, on Thursday, Thursday, second, no, when is it? February sixteenth through the nineteenth at the Lompoc Airport, we have a nineteen-twenty-eight Ford Tri-Motor plane that is flying in for three days, and it's going to be giving rides to the public, not free, seventy dollars for adults, and fifteen dollars for children seventeen, or, yeah, seventeen and under. It's a beautiful-looking plane, I think we should all take advantage of it. Okay, nothing other than the report. If there's nothing else, we are adjourned to a regular city council meeting on February seventh at six-thirty p.m. here in council chambers. Good night.